Morning Zach, can you hear me please?
Good morning Councilman, I can.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
All right, we're gonna get started. First of all, thank you for joining us for the City of Oklahoma City's teleconference city council meeting. If the teleconference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within thirty minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued till later today, May eleventh, at one o'clock PM via teleconference unless we state a different time. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, public hearing, or to speak under citizens to be heard, please call four zero five two nine seven two three nine one, or text four zero five two one nine seven nine eight seven, or email cityclerk@OKC.gov. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment. A thirty second reminder will be provided prior to the microphone being muted. All participants except for the council members, please keep your phones on mute. And when it is your turn to speak, you may press star six to speak. We're gonna get started with an invocation. We have Pastor Derek Richardson of Community Abundant Life Church on the line. I think I saw you there Pastor Richardson. If you are ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for who you are and the role that you play in all of our lives. Today we pray for our mayor and city council. You've called them to a day and time such as this. Come and reveal your will in every aspect of their life and service. And as they discuss the affairs of our city, we ask for your will to be done. Show them your purpose, enlighten them that they may know what you want and how to accomplish their task. We desire your glory and blessings in all that we do. Direct their thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path. Let your will be done. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you so much Pastor Richardson, I appreciate you joining us this morning. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order. And we will start with item three, office of the mayor. We have a couple of ceremonial presentations to make before we get to the resolutions. One is a proclamation for Bike Month. And I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, May is National Bike Month promoted by the League of American Bicyclists and celebrated in communities across the country. And whereas National Bike to Work Day is Friday, May twenty first, and the City of Oklahoma City Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, and Downtown OKC Partnership are hosting annual rides to downtown. And whereas, public awareness and education regarding safe bicycling is important to ensuring the safety and comfort of all road users. And whereas, the City of Oklahoma City, ACOG, Downtown OKC Partnership, Mbarc, local bicycling organizations, and bicycle shops throughout Oklahoma City are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas, the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, enjoyable, and environmentally friendly form of transportation and recreation. And whereas, creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, quality of life, community spirit, and safety, and to reduce pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on roads. And whereas, the ongoing implementation of BikeWalk OKC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan of Oklahoma City will create a citywide bicycle network that can be used by riders of all ages and abilities. And whereas, the City of Oklahoma City has secured tens of millions of dollars toward providing bicycle and trail infrastructure through the Better Street Safer City Program, multiple federal grants, and the MAPS4 Initiative. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 to be Bike Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you, and I understand we may have Aunt Leticia Dunbar maybe on the line to speak to this?
No, this is, I work for Leticia, this is Max Harris with Planning Department.
Hey Max, go ahead.
Okay, thanks so much for this proclamation. Every year we do a Bike to Work Day proclamation. And this year we wanted to, along with other municipalities in the region and throughout the country frankly, honor Bike Month. The League of American Bicyclists and many other cities throughout the country are making proclamations like this. And so yeah, we just wanna promote bicycling and safety and everything in Oklahoma City. Next week we have a launch of our Watch For Me campaign which promotes safety among all road users. And we partnered with ACOG and the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office as part of that. And then next Friday, May twenty first, from seven AM to nine AM is Bike to Work Day. And so we're happy to be able to do that again. We had to skip it last year due to COVID, but so this year we've partnered with Downtown OKC Partnership and ACOG to provide Junction Coffee, complimentary coffee from Junction Coffee, and then a few different rides too. So join us at Bicentennial Park on May twenty first for all your cycling friends as well.
Great, thank you so much. All right, now we also have a citation recognizing our American Legion posts and their response to our October ice storm. And so I would ask the clerk to read this citation.
Whereas during the period of October twenty sixth through twenty eighth, 2020, Oklahoma City and surrounding areas experienced a disastrous ice storm which resulted in a state of emergency declaration from Governor Stitt and a presidential major disaster declaration. And whereas, at the time the ice storm occurred, most trees and vegetation still had leaves which magnified the impacts of the freezing rain and ice, causing extensive tree and branch damage producing over one hundred thousand tons of vegetative debris. And whereas, some local military spouses of deployed service members experienced damage to their homes and due to damaged trees and branches had difficulty getting in and out of their homes. And whereas, the City of Oklahoma City Office of Emergency Management was made aware of these military families and reached out to Ken Wyatt for assistance who promptly mobilized the American Legion posts to meet the need of these families. And whereas, Post Commander Robert Haw and Wagner Trimble, Post Twelve, Post Commander J.D. Kennard and Kilgore George Dean, Post Three Ten, and Post Commander Michael Markson and American Legion Riders, Post Thirteen Forty, all answered the call to help the military families in need. And whereas, American Legion posts responded to all requests and completed all of the requests which helped protect property and ensure the safety of families of deployed military personnel. And whereas, the response efforts and actions of these posts are in the best tradition of the American Legion, their mission, vision, values, and the Oklahoma standard. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby recognize and commend the unselfish service of these American Legion posts and thank them on behalf of the people of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, and I see we have Frank Barnes on the line as well as Robert Haw from the American Legion. Frank, did you wanna say anything first?
Well, I think the citation speaks for itself, but I wanna thank Ken Wyatt and the American Legion posts for stepping up and meeting an unmet need and addressing the needs of these families at a particularly difficult time. Again, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, and Mr. Haw, welcome to our council meeting. And thank you so much for your service and everything that was done during this storm. We'd love to hear a few words from you.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here and good morning to all of you. My stepson and I got the call, actually got a call from American Legion Post One Eleven in Edmond. And the family that we helped, we did it because it's the right, it's the Oklahoma standard, you help your neighbors. And was very glad to be there. Felt like I was, was a citizen that had a chainsaw.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much Mr. Haw, we appreciate you and everybody who pitched in at such a crazy time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to item three A on office of the mayor. And that's a resolution of commendation for Lieutenant Brian Taylor on his selection as the May twenty twenty one South Oklahoma City Kulanis Club Employee of the Month. We do have a resolution here that we'd like to, great, go ahead.
Whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor has been a city employee for sixteen years and is a police lieutenant and the deputy emergency management director in the Office of Emergency Management. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor was new to emergency management when the pandemic broke out and had to familiarize himself to his new duties while responding to complex challenges brought on by COVID-19 followed by two natural disasters. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor monitored ongoing police protests and severe storms while coordinating mutual aid support to Tulsa and COVID-19 related responsibilities while continuing to perform his normal duties. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor distributed PPE to school districts in central Oklahoma by coordinating a large-scale POD pod at the Cox Convention Center as well as a drive-through pod for flu shots for city employees. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor worked closely with emergency management's fire liaison to plan, coordinate, and run thirty-two COVID-19 vaccination pods dispensing more than eight thousand doses of vaccine to employees, contractors, and household members. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor is a dependable and skillful employee who takes initiative and is always willing to help. And whereas, this council desires to recognize Lieutenant Brian Taylor for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Lieutenant Brian Taylor, May twenty twenty one, South Oklahoma City Kulanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, well, why don't we pass this resolution? And then let's, let's hear from Lieutenant Taylor. But first of all, we need a motion and a second. When we have it, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Lieutenant Taylor, I believe you're on the line?
Yes sir, I am.
Thank you so much for your service in a year when emergency management was certainly a phrase we heard a lot of. And we're very grateful for you and glad that you were able to step in at just the right time. So we'd love to hear a few words from you.
Well, I guess I'll start off by thanking all members of the council for the unanimous vote on this resolution. Very honored to have been nominated by Captain Barnes for this award. As the resolution states, I was new to emergency management when the pandemic hit. I was assigned to emergency management on Friday, December thirteenth of 2019. And within a week of me being here, we had the first Penn Square Mall shooting. So I kinda came into emergency management with both feet, my hair on fire. But regards to the pandemic response, I am simply one of many who have been a huge part in what we have done in response to this pandemic. And I think that bears a little bit of recognition outside of just myself. I think I should start off with Captain Barnes, who is my director. He's been a teacher and a mentor and a great leader to me. I've learned a lot from him in my short time here. And we've, we've done and we've seen a lot since I've been here. He's mentioned to me that several emergency management personnel worked their entire career and never see one declared disaster. And I've been involved in three in a year and a half. I'd also like to recognize Sharon Ray, who's our coordinator. Maria Chivari, who is our public information and marketing coordinator. Both of them have been very helpful in this whole situation from the pandemic to the pods for vaccine distribution. Sergeant Kim Holmes from the Police Department and Lieutenant Ryan Woodard from the Fire Department, both worked with me very closely as part of the medical monitoring unit and ensuring the health and welfare of the city, which we continue to do to this day. Sergeant Jennifer Gulick has worked in the Situation Unit with me and helped work on some of the situation reports we developed early on. Molly Rainey from Mbarc has done a lot of work on the guidance we've provided to the city. Lieutenant Ron Northcutt, Lieutenant Jason Knight, Sergeant Anthony Stacy, Ryan Baker from the Planning Office, Officer Tyler McCullough, Sergeant Christine Turner, and Lieutenant Bridget Shin all make up part of the COVID-19 Task Force. They've come from various areas of the city and various work locations to come together and work hard. And I think we did a fantastic job in the early response to the pandemic. Now, the vaccine, that has been a long process that has taken a lot of effort from a lot of people. I'd like to thank Major Scott Grubbs from the Fire Department. He's been with me side by side, running, and making sure all of these pods that we've done have run smoothly. We have enough vaccine, we have enough vaccinators on hand, and we can get the paperwork in and out and turn back into city county health so it can get entered. We've also had a lot of support from the Special Events Unit down in Bricktown. So I'd like to recognize and thank Lieutenant Audrey George, Sergeant Jesse Butts, Sergeant Steve Johnson, Sam Blumenthal, Chris Lot, Marcia Neely, Victoria Bayless, Brett House, Sergeant Felix Valdez, and all of the divisional Mobile Command Center teams that have come out and helped. They've all been a great asset to us and have helped us very well. We've called them at a moment's notice to tear down and reset Building Ten multiple times. And they have been nothing but willing to help whenever we call. I also like to thank Sergeant Amy Hanson, who is now Detective Amy Hanson. She helped us a lot during the vaccinations with keeping our documentation together so we know who's been for first and second doses and who we need to call and reschedule. And finally, I don't think I could have done all of this without my wife. I do believe she's listening in on YouTube, but she has been my rock. She's been there every day with me when I've come home late, when I've left early, and when I've just come home completely drained from the day and sat and listened and let me vent and unwind so that I could go to sleep and get up and do it again. Thank you.
Well said. Well, thank you so much for your service. And again, congratulations, and we're very grateful for you.
Thank you Mayor Holt, I appreciate it.
All right, well now we have item three B, a resolution recognizing and commending Jennifer Sinclair on her selection as the May twenty twenty one Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And I'd ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Whereas Jennifer Sinclair has been named Teacher of the Month for May twenty twenty by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas Jennifer has been teaching at Nichols Hills Elementary for twenty-three years. She currently teaches kindergarten but has also taught first and second grades. She has been a teacher for twenty-seven years with Oklahoma City Public Schools. And whereas Jennifer received a Bachelor's of Science in Early Education and a Master's in Education Early Childhood from the University of Central Oklahoma. And whereas Jennifer uses a child-centered approach to classroom teaching, we're focusing on a cooperative rather than competitive environment built self-esteem and competence in students and believes it is important that students are given a variety of challenges every day because these opportunities help kids develop critical thinking skills. And whereas Jennifer volunteers her time by serving as a den leader to the Tiger Cub Pack and serves as teacher liaison at Nichols Hills. And whereas Jennifer has served as a cooperating teacher to student teachers and observers by having college students come into the classroom and guide them in hands-on learning as they interact with the class. She also serves as a lead mentor teacher. And whereas Jennifer was named a Great Ideas recipient, Nichols Hills Teacher of the Year and has been named a past Oklahoma City Public Schools Teacher of the Year semifinalist. She is trained in Great Expectations and Foreknowledge and is a naturally, sorry, nationally board certified teacher. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Jennifer Sinclair on her selection as May twenty twenty one Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, and why don't we pass this resolution? And then we'll hear from Jennifer. So we have a motion and a second. Got it, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And Jennifer, I think I saw you on the line, there you are. We would love to hear a few words for you, from you. And we are so grateful for all you do for kids of Oklahoma City, especially in this uniquely challenging year.
Thank you, thank you very much Mayor Holt for having me this morning. I wanna thank the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Oklahoma City Rotary Club for the honor and the surprise this month. It was a big, a big honor. And I have been dedicated to the district for, this is actually my twenty-eighth year to teach, all in Oklahoma City. And most of my time has been teaching kindergarten, which is my first love. So yes, it has been a trying year, but I've had a very supportive admin and other teachers in our building. And we've kind of all gotten through it together. And so I, I just really appreciate the honor for doing what I love, which is just teaching kids every day. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer, we're very grateful for you. Thanks for taking time out this morning and congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, well that brings us now to item three C. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinances proposed to be changed that are here listed. This is the second of three meetings. And these are the repeals briefed on two weeks ago of most of our occupational licenses here in the city. And of course, the final consideration would be in two weeks from now. This is just the public hearing. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under the public hearing?
No one has signed up.
All right, well we will close the public hearing and then move on to item three D. This is the appointment of Brandon Boudreaux to serve as a member of the Oklahoma City Game and Fish Commission. Do we have a motion for that? We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That concludes office of the mayor, and now we move on to Journal of Council Proceedings, items four A and four B, which we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes Mayor, we have several this morning. I'll just note that all of the items that I will read, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Beginning with item nine N one, dilapidated structures on page thirteen. Item E forty-three twenty North Sixteenth Street, this is being reworked as unsecured. Item F twenty-nine, two-one-nine, Southwest Twenty-Eighth Street, the owner has removed. On item nine O one, page thirteen, again on item, this unsecured structures, item B fourteen O eight, Southwest Beasley Street, the owner secured. Item F seventy-four sixteen, South Drexel Avenue, the owner has secured. Item J thirteen O seven, Lynnwood Boulevard, re-notifying for additional openings. Item M seventeen eleven, North Vermont Avenue, the owner has secured. Item O thirteen twelve, Northwest Eighth Street, the owner has secured. Item P six thirty-six, Southeast Eleventh Street, the owner has secured. Item Q sixteen thirteen, Northeast Fourteenth Street, the owner has secured. Item S twenty-two fifteen, Northwest Sixteenth Street, the owner has secured. Item Z twelve twenty, Southwest Thirty-third Street, to re-notify for a new owner. And then item AE thirty-seven And then item A E thirty-seven O one Southwest Fortyth Street, re-notifying for additional openings. On item nine P one, abandoned buildings, uh, this is on page fourteen. Item B fourteen O eight Southwest Brinkley Street, owner is secured. Item I seventeen eleven North Vermont Avenue, owner is secured. Item K thirteen twelve Northwest Eighth Street, the owner has secured. Item L six thirty-six Southeast Eleventh Street, the owner has secured. Item M sixteen thirteen Northeast Fourteenth Street, the owner has secured. Item T twelve twenty Southwest Thirty-third Street, to re-notify a new owner. And then item X thirty-seven O one Southwest Fortyth Street, to re-notify for additional openings. And that is all the items I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item six is revocable permits. We do not have any this morning. We'll recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Where we have items A through K, we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority where we merely have item A, claims and payroll, but we'll go ahead and take a motion on that. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have no items for consideration today, so we will adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council meeting where we find ourselves on page four of your printed agenda, item seven, the consent docket. There are presentations already scheduled for item S as in Sam, item Y, uh, item A M, uh, M as in Mary, item B D. And that's it. So if there's anyone else who wants to pull out an item for a separate vote or just a separate bit of comments, now would be the time to mention it.
Yes, Mayor, um, item R.
Okay.
And item um, A W through B, B as in boy. Two Bs. And item B L.
All right. Anyone else?
Mayor Mark Stone Cyber here. Item A C. If Eric could give us a brief update on the status of that project, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor.
Uh huh.
Um, can I, we hear a little bit more, I'd like to hear a little bit more about A T and A U, please.
What were those again?
A T and A U.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, if that's it, we will, uh, take them in order then, which means we will begin with item R, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, um, I just wanted to make mention, I know we, we pretty much do this every year, but I am really hopeful and hoping, uh, that we can work on getting a sunset on this capital medical zoning. That is in this part of the ward, especially because of the fact that we still have to regulate it as our city. Um, and the capital medical zoning overregulates that. So, um, for lack of a better way to describe that. But I, I just want to continue to make mention that every, every year we hope that we can get a sunset. So I would love, um, and I know Mayor, you've been in the Senate, so if you can help me advocate to get a sunset on this, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And, and so, yeah, you're referencing, um, yeah, state, this is state law that, uh, has superseded our zoning regulations in this area around the Capitol.
Correct, that which is again, um, you know, that's a whole different conversation in itself, but at the same time, uh, because of some of the, the folks that actually sit on this type of, of board trustee, whatever you want to call it, commission. Um, we have folks that aren't actually in this community that are regulating these areas. So I think that's one of the main issues that I have, but I just wanted to bring reference to this as I continue to do every year in hopes that we can advocate to get a sunset on, uh, capital medical zoning commission.
All right. Thank you. So that brings us to item S, which has a presentation. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Randy Marks with the planning department is here. Randy coordinates many of our arts projects. I really appreciate his leadership and work with Robbie Kinsel as they uh, provide this leadership for the city and art and, uh, uh, so Randy's going to give us an update on this project, uh, that's listed on item S.
Thank you and good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council and Mr. City Manager. I'm Randy Marks, Public Art Project Manager. And I will share my screen here. The word name movement is a sculptural gate for the new James Stewart Golf Clubhouse currently under construction near northeast tenth street on Frederick Douglas Avenue. The design by artist Michael Hoffner was chosen by a selection committee from among other finalist designs as the one most appropriate for this site. And this is the site. Here's northeast tenth and MLK and Frederick Douglas Avenue. This is the site of the James Stewart Golf Course and the clubhouse here. Notice that it is across the street from the new Willa D Johnson Recreation Center, also under construction, just a couple of blocks from Douglas High School and just down the avenue from First Team Metropolitan. The, uh, James Stewart course is the home course for First Team Metropolitan, which teaches children, uh, core values like honesty, integrity and sportsmanship while teaching them how to play golf. The gate is indicated here on this architectural rendering in this red block. And the view is from the inside of the gate, uh, the core side of the gate looking from the southeast to the northwest. So the gate has two functions, a practical function and a symbolic function. The practical function, of course, is as a main entrance to the course. So coming from the parking lot, which is over here into the, uh, area where you can go to the first tier, the driving range or other, uh, aspects of the course. And, um, the symbolic function honors Mr. James Stewart, for which the course is named, and tells a story about his life and legacy. So this brings up the question, so who is James Stewart? Here's a picture of him with a former high school classmate, Ralph Ellison, Mr. Ellison's brother Herbert. James or Jimmy Stewart, as he was called, was a change agent and a voice for equality and equity, equity. A leader of the adult chapter of the NAACP in Oklahoma City at the time of the sit-ins in the late nineteen fifties. He was part of the national leadership of the NAACP for twenty-four years. He was a vice president at Oklahoma Natural Gas, working his way up from his first position as a janitor in the late nineteen thirties. And later in life, he was a golf commissioner. This is just a few of the dozens of things that I could say about Mr. Stewart. He was truly a giant. He is a giant in the history and in the story of the life of Oklahoma City. I want to call your attention to something that we put in the call to artists, and this was a stated preference, not a requirement, but a stated preference that the selected artist would create a culturally diverse team, which will include at least one locally based apprentice artist who lives, works or attends school in Oklahoma City. The apprentice should have a meaningful role in the design and production of the finished work and be compensated for the time and input. I'm going to come back to this in, in just a little bit, but first we're going to take a look at the actual design. So the name movement refers to the change in position of the work itself. Uh, the actions led by Mr. Stewart and others. And the evolution of attitudes inspired by those actions. So in the top figure, we see the figure of Mr. Stewart here in position of speaking and urging his communities to action. And in the closed position, we see Mr. Stewart in the position of actually leading those communities. Uh, the community is represented here by the brown, in the brown, the primarily the African-American community that, uh, he was leading as part of the NAACP. And just as a civic leader and human being, blue represents his colleagues and coworkers at ONG. And the green represents his, uh, his golfing community, including, we see the kids here, uh, that, um, are currently still learning as at Metropolitan First Team. And we have a short video that we get to see created by Mr. Hoffner. So again, here is the gate in the closed position. The, uh, community, it's gate opens, community slides on a track. And now we're going to switch the view to the inside of the gate, and you can see that the figure of Mr. Stewart actually pivots around. And we see the other position. As part of the, uh, conceptual design report, Michael Hoffner proposed that he would hire an apprentice to assist with the design, design drawings and fabrication. Uh, he was, he was the only artist to really fully embraced this part of the call of the artist. He went out and researched and found and selected Rodney Jordan, an architecture student at OSU, whose extended family lives in the area of the golf course. Rodney, Rodney will work with Michael through the summer and will get an unparalleled opportunity to help create this artwork that will end up being a landmark. Some of the proposed work, uh, by the apprentice, it's proposed and not limited to on design, he'll refine the silhouettes of the human figures and prepare the drawings for fabrication. On engineering, he'll work with an engineer that, uh, is a coworker with Michael and, uh, get direct experience. That way he will assist the fabricator on the project as needed. And he'll get hands-on in experience in the installation of the piece. And finally, he's going to do research and create a Wikipedia page about Mr. Stewart. There is no page out there, and this seems like a glaring oversight. And so this is an opportunity to correct that. So we think that this is an outstanding project, very well thought out. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Um, I don't necessarily have any questions, but I do want to thank you, Mr. Randy, for this presentation. And, um, I, I do want to also make mention, I did ask for this to be deferred. And the reason I asked for that, this to be deferred, uh, was be so I could get just better understanding of, of this piece. And, uh, one of the things that I will say that just gave me pause as far as this, this project is concerned is the fact that it's a silhouette of, uh, Mr. Stewart. And one of the things that we do know, especially with history and African-American history, is that we have statues of everyone. But you don't see statues of black people as far as detailed statues of African-Americans, um, and them as a person. So those are the things that I, I was very reserved as far as this particular piece. However, I will say, uh, we did come with a healthy compromise after talking with this, uh, with Ms. Robbie and uh, Mr. Randy. And one of the things that, uh, we have committed to for this project as well is uh, alongside of where you see the silhouette of Mr. Stewart, uh, there will be a a picture, I don't, in the glass to actually give meaning to Mr. Stewart, the person he was, so people will actually see him um, and also tell his story. So I, I do want to thank the committee that were, that decided upon this particular piece of art for this, uh, installation. And one of the things that, uh, I think is the most meaningful is the fact that there were a couple of folks on this committee that personally knew Mr. Stewart. And that's why I, I was curious again, when we looked at this particular piece, because I know myself, I know who he is, but I don't know, I didn't know him. Um, and the generations to come will not know who he is. They'll just see a silhouette. So it's very important to make sure we continue to speak these names, especially, um, in, in the, the wake of being able to have, uh, new additions to the northeast quadrant as far as these types of developments are concerned. And also, um, just want to give you a li- little extra piece of history that I learned with this piece as well from Miss Debbie. Um, in our city council office that we have the Willa D Johnson Recreation Center next door to this, but Ms. Johnson is the reason that this is named after Jimmy Stewart. So it's just, uh, very meaningful that we have a story to tell such as this, uh, the fabric of, of, um, Douglas area and uh, some people who really paved the way, uh, for civil rights and equal rights and equity, uh, in our city. And again, these stories should continue to be told. So thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, so will, will we see that image? Is there like a, a draft of what Councilwoman Nice is describing of Mr. Stewart?
There is not yet, but there will be. There will actually be another selection committee that will consider this and, uh, Councilwoman Nice, we hope that you will be on that selection committee as we, uh, choose that design. So we're already in discussions with the artist and the architects, uh, about, about the placement of the new piece. And, uh, so you will hear about that later. It will come back after it goes selection committee to Arts Commission. It will come back to council for approval.
Thank you. And thank you also for the presentation, Randy, and the history, because I didn't know that backstory, and it was a very helpful backstory. Um, I mean, I just showed my students, and I've talked about it before, but we just watched Men U Rivers to Cross and paired it with HBO's Watchmen, which was a hoot. Those kids, those student had, they had lots of cool things to say, but like the people in that documentary that they talk about, you know, um, Clara Looper is not in it. Um, and hearing that Mr. Stewart is there during our sit-ins, that's as, as the leader of the NAACP, I just, that is a that's like a moving mountains type, uh, position to occupy at that time. And I say it as a comment, but also as I know that Wikipedia page is coming. Is there an opportunity, is some of this history told there on site? And hearing Nikki talk about the, the role that Willa played, it's something that seems so, you know, um, in, you know, inconsequential at the time, is actually like dovetailed into, um, you know, the naming of this building, this site, this, this with his name and for her building to be there as well. There just seems like there's a lot of story to tell here in this place. And I mentioned my students in the documentaries just to say the students love learning so much of it, and we just don't learn all of it, not even close to all of it. So that's kind of my, why I'm wondering what's, what else might be possible there or what, what I might have missed too.
We're thinking that there will be definitely a narrative along with the, uh, pictorial image of Mr. Stewart. All of that will be fleshed out with the artist and selection committee. So we'll be getting input on exactly what would be the most appropriate thing to do. And then, uh, we'll turn the artist loose and let him design, and then it'll come back to you for approval.
Thank you. Cool. Matt, this is neat. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I don't have any questions per se, um, but I, uh, did want to just really recognize that apprenticeship piece. I got the opportunity to sit in on a presentation from, uh, Robbie and Randy last week to potential artists for the, um, Lower Scissor Tail Park piece and, um, was excited to hear about that, that it's not necessarily a requirement, but that preference for projects that have some kind of apprenticeship component, because I think, I know, and I think I voiced it, I've heard Councilwoman Nice voice it, wanting to have more opportunities for local artists to become part of, um, being able to apply for these RFPs and things. And I think that's such a great way to create that pipeline of both. and things. And I think that's such a great way to create that pipeline of both having an artist maybe that isn't from Oklahoma City, you know, get to respond to something, but have an opportunity for a young person or group of people to learn from people that are outside of Oklahoma City and bring some of that knowledge and, and learning locally even. And maybe building those folks up to, to be able to apply for their own projects one day. And I just think that's such a cool component of, of this piece and of kind of what just that, that focus on trying to, and same thing with the, the Willa Johnson Recreation Center and the young people there over at Douglas. I think it's just a neat, neat opportunity to, to really cultivate talent here locally and, and bring some of that knowledge from other places to young people here in the city. So I really just appreciate seeing that as part of this project.
Thank you. That's exactly how we're hoping it will work. Thanks for calling that out.
Okay. Anything else on this item? All right. Then we will move on to item Y. This has a presentation, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On item Y, we have Eric Winger here to speak to this project at the renovations at the Civic Center Music Hall.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm getting ready to share a screen on item Y, which is the ratify and approve the construction contract for the Civic Center Music Hall. Can everybody see this? Yes.
We can't see it yet, Eric.
Cannot see it yet. Let me try one more time here.
It looks like it's coming up.
Sorry about that. Can you see this now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So yeah, I'm pleased to present the Construction Contract Award, item for the Civic Center Music Hall. And we presented this project at the preliminary stage last year. But I'm pleased to announce that on April the 14th, and we did receive seven bids for this project. And I'm just going to do a brief overview of what is included in the project and the totals and the costs. So as a reminder, this is a 2017 Bond Program project, the architect with Frank Short, Borussia. And the contractor that is the apparent low bidder is Flint Co. at a contract award of $12,798,000. The scope of the project includes the renovations to the primary lobby and the atrium. There's also a new ticket booth, we'll call it patron service desk, renovations of the Free D Little Theater, including areas of the balcony inside the theater, stage and stage equipment. And there's also a new entry on the north side of the building that's proposed, which I'll show you here in this site plan. So this is an overall view of the Civic Center Music Hall. Couch Drive is at the top of the drawing and Coal Core Drive is at the bottom. So if you look at the Civic Center from above, on the north side, you'll see a note that says new building expansion. And this is that area where there'll be a new ticketing and we'll call area that's specific to the Free D Little Theater. The other renovations are actually interior. This is a plan that shows some of those interior spaces. And so on the upper left-hand portion of the drawing, you can see the seating for the, for the little theater there. The area that's in a, in a red tone, that is that new north lobby addition. There's also renovations for the, for the areas in blue that are the lobby on the upper part of the drawing, but then also the main lobby, the traditional and historic front entry that's on the right side of the drawing is renovated as well. This is what that new north entry would look like for the little theater. So it is going to be adding additional space onto that building. It'll be, you know, made to, to look like and very similar to the original building. This has already been approved, of course, with the DDRC previously. This is some of the interior concepts and renderings for the Free D Little Theater. And so what's anticipated is it is a theater that's not been in use for some time. It is old and historic, but the goal is to restore it to a lot of its original splendor. Looking then at the lobby area, which would be the main lobby, this would be the main entry to the Civic Center Music Hall. There's new front entry areas, new seating that's anticipated, new flooring, all those different features. And so this is another rendering of that, that front entry. You may recall that this is an entry that has some glass separations. A lot of that glass is being removed to make for more open space. And this is the main lobby and the atrium area. The schedule, so with the council's approval today of the item and moving this forward, we would begin construction summer of 2021 with completion in the fall of 2022. We've coordinated very closely with the Civic Center Foundation on a number of events that are planned there. So a lot of the construction is going to be working around some of the planned activities. We're also going to be looking at additional options to potentially add some of the ad alternates that would not be awarded as a part of the initial construction during the construction phase. And so once awarded, we can begin some conversations with the contractor to see about potential additional enhancements, something that the foundation and Oklahoma City would like to do together. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have about this item.
Any questions for Eric? Here we go. We'll move on to the next item. Is that everything on this item? Okay. Item AC, Councilman Stunsifer, you wanted to visit about this briefly.
Eric, Mark Stunsifer here. Debbie Martin and I have been getting some calls and emails about the status of this project. And so I was hoping you might give us a brief update of where we're at. I drove it last night and I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Again, Eric Winger, Public Works Director. Item AC is a change order number five for a project. There's a widening project on North MacArthur Boulevard from Northwest 150th to Northwest 164th. It's a project that began last summer in 2020 and it's now nearing substantial completion. We also have received a number of calls. The project has taken a little bit longer than expected. There were some weather delays that were experienced and the item that's on the agenda today is to add an additional 32 days that were due to the weather that was experienced in February and in March. I think everyone will recall February, we had a lot of severe cold weather. We also had some snow. We did experience some rain in March. Project is on track actually to finish though by the end of May. There's really two remaining items on the project that are not complete, the striping and then also the sodding. But all of the major work has been completed with all the paving installed, curb and gutter and generally the widening. So striping and sodding will occur over the next two to three weeks.
And that's what I saw last night. It just looked like it needs striping and some sodding. So I appreciate the update and I'm glad we'll be finished hopefully by the end of May if weather permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item AM. We have a presentation on this.
Yes, sir. I'm going to introduce Jason Fairbrush, our Transit Parking Director, to give us a, just a quick introduction on this project. And then he'll introduce the architect and engineer who are working on this project for the new Northwest Bus Rapid Transit project. Jason?
Yes, sir. There we go. Sorry for the delay there. So yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Jason Fairbrush, Public Transportation and Parking Director. Again, it's a, my privilege is morning to be able to share with you an update regarding the city's first bus rapid transit corridor. As you know, this project has been discussed with council several times. So I know many of you are familiar with the project. Just as a couple of reminders, the project is being funded about 50% through a federal build grant where the city received a $14 million build grant. And then of course, local funds make up the, the remaining portion of the budget. One of the things that I thought I would share with you is that as we've progressed on this project, I feel like it truly is a great example of departmental coordination to move the project along and deliver on what we promised. Although again, I'm able to introduce it, the update to you today. Public Works and Planning, our Stakeholder Work Group, all contribute regularly to the progress of this project. The Utilities Department is also working with us as we move forward with the park and ride concept at the end of the corridor at Northwest Expressway in Meridian. So again, just a, just a lot of, a lot of departments involved in moving the project forward. So we've recently completed a few milestones with regards to the project. One of those is public engagement. As you, as you know, we've had a couple of town hall meetings where we've received feedback from the community about the project. And we will have other community engagement opportunities as we move forward. We have initiated the branding for the BRT. So just like we did with OKC Streetcar, we will brand the BRT so that it is distinct and separate, but related to our Embark Family of Services. So we have started that branding project. We've also took a major step last Friday during the COTPA Board of Trustees meeting where the board approved a request for proposals to issue basically a proposals for bus procurement. So the vehicles that we'll use along the BRT corridor, that solicitation, if you will, is being advertised and we're moving forward on bus procurement. And then of course, what brings us here today, today's council item, the receipt of the preliminary design report. We've completed about 30% design for the project, are continuing to work through that design this summer. And we have with us, I'd like to introduce and, and I'll quickly turn it over to Brian Comer and Marcus Geist from HNTB. And HNTB is our engineering consultant for the BRT. And they're going to actually share the preliminary design report with you this morning. So Brian, are you with us?
I am. And can you see my screen? I just shared my screen.
Yes, we, we see it.
Okay. So good morning. It's, it's, it's good to be with you this morning and provide the update on the Northwest Bus Rapid Transit project. So I'm sure you're all familiar by now, but Bus Rapid Transit is a high-quality bus-based system that delivers fast, reliable and efficient service, operating in a rail-like manner. The Northwest BRT service will be, include those specially branded vehicles like Jason mentioned will include the, the brand of the system. And they will be distinctive from the rest of the Embark fleet and provide amenities to improve the customer experience. The BRT fleet will include seven operating vehicles and two spares for a total of nine operating vehicles in the fleet. The Northwest BRT will include level boarding platform. So obviously you're all familiar with the OKC Streetcar. This significantly improves boarding at a lighting times and significantly differentiates this from the rest of, of the Embark bus service. So the Northwest BRT, as Jason mentioned, will be Central Oklahoma's first BRT line and will provide customers with faster and more frequent service. The BRT will expand local and regional mobility options, improve job access and enhance a livability along the corridor. So this will be a significant improvement for the Northwest area. The design efforts for the Northwest BRT rely heavily on past planning efforts. Jason mentioned the recent public engagement as part of the design process. But the, the public engagement goes all the way back to the multimodal concept plan in 2015 and 2016, which included significant public engagement and defined the preliminary route and station locations, as well as connections to major activity centers along the corridor. So the BRT is funded 50% through the build grant, which stands for Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development. And this is a $1.5 billion discretionary grant program through USDOT. And it funds a wide variety of infrastructure projects, transportation projects, including transit. The project is, has about 50% of the, of the, of the funding. The, the project total budget is 28.8 million, 50% is funded through that build grant, as Jason mentioned, and 50% through local match. So the, the BRT system includes many different elements that I've, I've touched on, on before. So the, the first big enhancement that we would like to just to touch on is the technology enhancements, including transit signal priority. And this is something that significantly improved running times for the OKC Streetcar and will also be included as part of the project in the Northwest BRT. And TSP uses technology to reduce dwell times at traffic signals for the transit vehicles by extending the green light time or reducing the red time, red time at a given signal as, as the vehicle approaches. The system will also include several enhancements to make the service more efficient, including bus pull-offs to improve system reliability and safety and queue jumps that will allow the transit vehicle and emergency vehicles to bypass traffic and clear the intersection through a dedicated turn light. The BRT service will include improved service frequency, 15 minutes within the peak period, branded vehicles, level boarding platforms. And the BRT line is approximately eight miles long and will include 16 space, station pairs or three, and three potential park and rides. So we'd like to talk a, a, a bit about the stations. And as you see with this rendering, the stations look a lot like the OKC Streetcar stations. We'll remind you a lot of those stations. Each BRT station will include a raised platform for level boarding with ADA ramps at each end of the platform. And the platform will include amenities and will be ADA accessible. The platform will include a shelter with seating and specially branded pylon. And the pylon will be visible from a significant distance and will serve as a landmark and wayfinding for pedestrians and cyclists looking for a BRT stop. The pylon will include real-time information displayed to let you know when the next bus is arriving, provide additional information for transit customers and potentially advertising. Each station will include a ticket kiosk where you can purchase your fare prior to boarding the bus, a litter receptacle and a lock with at least one bike rack. We would like to accommodate two bike racks depending upon each station and where we can fit those in. The BRT alignment will run mainly along the Northwest Expressway and Klassen Boulevard. And the route serves three hospitals, several residential neighborhoods and provides an important connection to downtown. The Northwest BRT, all the way back to the, the concept plan, is designed to serve areas of relatively high employment and population density within the Northwest corridor. The route will come within a half mile of 91,000 jobs and 23% of Oklahoma City's employment base. It also comes within a half mile of 40,000 residents and provides the ability to connect many more residents through park and ride opportunities, especially to serve that growing Northwest region. So I'm going to turn it over to Marcus and we're going to quickly walk through each of the, of the station locations. Marcus?
Thanks, Brian. And I guess you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So thank you for the opportunity to, to come today and talk regarding the route and each of these individual station locations. So like Brian said, there's 32 stops along the way, or 32 stations. So we'll go through these pretty quickly. You'll see sidewalk and signal improvements at many of the locations that'll help get the BRT riders back to the nearest intersection. Riders will be able to use the bike rack at each of those station locations or load their bike on the, on the bus with now the ability to get from the Northwest part of Oklahoma City back to downtown, connect to the existing streetcar. And in many cases, you'll see where it ties back to the OKC Trail Network that's, that was built as part of the MAPS 3 program. Like Brian mentioned, the route will start in, kind of will start downtown, work our way up Klassen and down Northwest Expressway and end at Northwest Expressway in Meridian. So just diving right in here. So here at Robinson, actually Brian, can you go back to Broadway and Main? So on the lower right here, you can see kind of the general map. You'll see the yellow dot. So as we go along, along the route, you'll see kind of how that yellow dot move along with us. So Broadway and Main, we're southbound here on Broadway in front of the Bank First Building. And just note that the station is located in the existing street parking space. So we'll turn now and go down Main and back up Robinson now. So here we're back on Robinson and Park. We're northbound on Robinson, just north of Park. And again, the station is located in the existing street parking. As we continue on down the route, make a stop at the, the Downtown Transit Center. Both the inbound and the outbound station are located here. The amenities are in a little bit different physical location because of leveraging the existing canopy and existing structure. But again, all of the amenities will still be. But again, all of the amenities will still be here with the raised platform that, that Brian talked about. As we continue on now to Hudson and Eighth. Here we're out in front of Elemental Coffee. Again, the station is located in the existing street parking spot. As we continue north and now to Tenth and Dewey, it's between Lee and Dewey. Our inbound and outbound station are located in the Parkway and are directly across from one another. Leveraging that mid-block crossing that's there today, right out in front of St. Anthony Hospital. We'll continue on now. We make our way west to Classen and up to Thirteenth. So as Jason talked about earlier, you know, the, the, a lot of the coordination between the various stakeholders and various things with Public Works and Embark. Also working with local developments to make sure that what we're building is aligning with what their improvements are. So what you see in pink here is the intersection improvements here will be designed and constructed as part of the future on cue development there, kind of in what would be the Southwest quadrant of Thirteenth and Classen. But you'll see the inbound and outbound station here are located. One thing that's unique here is that it's very similar to Fourth and Robinson where the, the bike lane that will be constructed as part of this project from Tenth to Sixteenth is going to be in the outside lane of Classen. The outside lane today is underutilized from a vehicle standpoint. And to prevent that conflict point at the actual station, the bike lane will actually go right behind the station and then continue along, along Classen. So while not showing the bike lanes here, a part of this project are from Tenth to Sixteenth. So as we continue on to Classen and Eighteenth. So here you have the inbound station is located kind of in that island there, just north of Seventeenth with a crossing that gets pedestrians back to the signal at Eighteenth. The outbound station here is located just outside of the Homeland Grocery Store. So continuing on to Twenty-third. Here you'll see both the inbound and outbound are on the, on the far side of the intersection for the direction of travel. But they're also expected to be high ridership here. So one thing that's unique about this, and Brian had showed the standard station rendering. We do have a high ridership where basically you have the same amenities, but you have a double shelter. So you have twice as big a shelter because of the anticipated folks from the traditional bus service that are going to intersect here and, and leverage the BRT service. So therefore, again, two shelters, two benches and two ADA staging areas. Really focusing on getting pedestrians back to the intersection and making sure that everything you'll see here is all ADA compliant. So as we continue north to Classen and Thirtyeth. Both of these stations I've shown are, are located on the south side. We're working with local property owners here to understand and, and make sure we're modifying the appropriate driveways on the outbound station location. Classen and Thirty-sixth as we continue. Here's both standard stations, both on the far side of the intersections. Continuing on to Forty-second, Forty-second has a unique opportunity here because just outside of New View. They're on the upper side or the west side of the screen. It's, you know, assisting the visually impaired folks. So we want to make sure we've got an extremely clear and safe place for folks to cross to get to New View and back to the stations. And we're still working with Public Works to understand and to select whether a full signal at Forty-second or a mid-block crossing with a signal is best to, to facilitate that crossing to and from the New View facility. We'll continue on then to Northwest Expressway and Blackwelder. So we've gone north up Classen. Now we've made the left and this is one of the locations that we have a right lane. Cue jump to go from the outside right lane to turn left onto Northwest Expressway. The inbound station here is located in a bus pull-off area. So that you'll see a common theme along Northwest Expressway where, where the, we're able to provide an area for the bus to safely pull over, board in a light and get, get the bus back up to speed, find a gap to merge into traffic and again, provide that sidewalk connection to the nearest intersection. As shown here, the outbound station here, just on the west side of Blackwelder operates in a very similar manner where we have that bus pull-off zone. Again, connects the, back to the intersection and provides that connectivity from a sidewalk standpoint. As we continue now to Northwest Expressway in Penn. So this station is just out in front of the Penn Square Mall. The station is positioned to accommodate an extra through lane. So again, working with Public Works and understanding the long-term plan here about having that future expansion, making sure that we're building the station in the right location to where we're not, it's not in the way for future widening. Again, there were several park and ride locations that, that Brian talked about. This is just one of the general areas that will have a park and ride. So the inbound station here is on the west side of Penn. Again, similar scenario here is positioned out for future widening along Northwest and provides that, that bus pull-off area. So we'll continue down Northwest and head south on Independence. So here, the stations are located just south of Northwest, again, outside of Integris Hospital. One of the locations here, if you're familiar with the area, kind of has a pretty aggressive slope that heads down towards that parking lot. So there will be, this is one of the locations that there will be a retaining wall on the project. Again, connections back to that existing crossing as part of, of this project. So we continue now south and we turn and go west on Portland or Fifty-sixth and head over to Portland. So you'll see both stations here at Fifty-sixth and Portland are along Fifty-sixth. Both of them have ADA improvements back to the intersection. But it's key here that both stations either have direct connections or sidewalk to the connection to part of that existing trail network. Continue north of Portland now to Northwest. And this is the inbound station. So it's located just south of Northwest Expressway along Portland. Again, connecting sidewalk that connects back north to the intersection and that multi-use path that runs parallel along Northwest Expressway. The outbound station is just west of the intersection here. It's similar to the other stations along Northwest. Brian, if you go next slide, where that allows the bus to pull off and board in the light and then accelerate and merge the bus back safely into traffic. So continuing on to Sixty-third and Meridian inbound is located along Sixty-third. It ties to the existing trail there on the bottom of the screen. And this is, the outbound station is actually one that we've recently been working with property owners here. And actually will be, it's shown on Meridian, but it's actually rotated around the corner. If you can imagine on the westbound Sixty-third. It will stop, board in the light and then continue on up north along Meridian. So as we continue then to our last stop, which is Northwest Expressway in Meridian, this is the end of the line station. So it's expected to have a high ridership here because of having a, a park and ride in this area. Again, ongoing coordination like Jason mentioned with development in this area to accommodate how the bus is going to turn around in this triangular area. The potential park and ride and then, you know, this, how the station actually ties in with the future mixed-use development here. Again, you can see the direct connections back to the existing trail and leveraging the trail network that's already in place. And with that, I'll turn it back to Brian to talk about park and ride considerations and overall schedule.
So park, park and ride is a significant portion of the service and that end of the line station at Meridian is one of the, 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 the key areas that we identified for the park and ride opportunity. So as I mentioned before, the project team is currently evaluating two additional locations other than that Meridian and Northwest Expressway in, in working with property owners to identify improvements and, and connections to each of those locations. In terms of project schedule, so as, as noted, as Jason noted, we're at the thirty percent preliminary design or thirty percent design level in, in, in terms of the preliminary design report. So final design is actually scheduled to complete this year with construction next year. And the planned revenue start or opening is planned for late 2023. And that really allows ample time for the completion of construction to in, include the, the, the testing phase and, and, and working all the kinks out in the system, similar to what you went through with, with OKC Streetcar in, in, in terms of the service. So we've outlined the schedule and that also includes the, you know, the planned delivery of the vehicles in, in time for the testing between construction and the planned revenue start in late 2023. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Marcus, this is Mark Stonecypher. I'm from Ward A. And one question I had at Northwest Expressway in Portland. When our riders disembark there, will they have easy access to the grocery stores, restaurants and other businesses in that area?
Yeah, I mean, with every one of these stops, you know, the intent is to get them back to existing infrastructure. You know, and coordinating with local match projects that have other sidewalk projects that, you know, that either tie to it or continue the, continue the momentum forward of getting folks to these attractions.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for your presentation. I have a series of questions and some comments, actually. First, before I go into those, let me just say, and everyone already knows, I'm a huge supporter of not just public transportation and walkability and bikeability, but very specifically this BRT project, so much so I worked with Councilwoman Hammond. We got two more of them in MAPS four, one to the northeast side and another one to the south side. So that will probably, will be part of our future over the next ten years. And of course, we know that a regional transit authority conversation is coming as well. So when you all talk about people being able to use the BRT to connect to a streetcar downtown, God willing, we'll have light rail connecting Edmund to, to Norman before it's all said and done and some sort of rail service connecting Great Town Tinker. And then people can use the BRT to connect to those services. That's, that's where my brain always goes. But more immediately. Okay, series of questions. One, I could have sworn in December, the last time I saw, it might not have been the last time, but it was the one that I remember the most, when I saw the, a route map. I could have swore I saw the BRT there when it's in downtown, when it gets to Tenth Street at the roundabout, that it was going to take Classen Boulevard, like the, the street along like McNelly's and the optometrist that's there and these sorts of things. And then connect to Thirteenth and then to Classen. But that's not what I just saw here. Can someone help me? Did I just dream up that route I just described?
Yeah, I don't, and I, I apologize. I'm trying to get to the the route map. So can you ask the question again?
Sure. It was specifically, it was your slide that had Tenth and Lee. That's why it stood out to me because I never remembered a Tenth and Lee previously. I remembered, and again, December was a crazy month. It's
Right.
I'll just say that, or a wacky year. But Lee and Tenth Street was one I don't remember previously being part of the conversation. I, I remember Hudson down to Tenth. Then you had West on Tenth. Then you go around the roundabout and then you head Northwest along like where Villa Teresa and where that row of developments are. Yeah. So I don't ever remember this. Was this always the plan? And I just, I just, I don't know.
Yeah. Councilman, I can, I can answer that. Yeah, we've, we've been looking at just Tenth Street West out of downtown for, I mean, a considerable amount of time. I know you've been associated with the project really since it was in the concept plan. We, we may have shown some variations of coming out of downtown like when we had our public engagement during the concept planning stage. You know, as we were gathering, gathering input on kind of what the final route design would look like. But, but yeah, I mean, we've looked at just Tenth Street for quite some time now. I mean, I think that's really the only that's the only street we've looked at coming out of downtown since HNTB's, HNTB has been involved. So that, that might have been, and like I said, part of the concept planning when we were still trying to decide, you know, do we stay on Northwest Expressway, for example, or do we go down Independence and serve Integris and Deaconess? I think there were a couple of variations of how we could get out of downtown. So thirteen, you're probably, you're probably remembering Thirteenth correctly as an option. But I, I, we shouldn't have shown anything recently with that in there. If we did, it was just simply, you know, our mistake on a slide or something. But I just, it should, it has been Tenth Street. And then if, if it's okay, well, if it's okay, while I I'm off mute here. I, I did want to go back and answer Councilman Stonecypher's question, just a, a little bit more specifically. Councilman Stonecypher, when you were asking about sidewalk connections from the stop at Portland and Northwest Expressway, you know, back to restaurants and grocery stores, for example. So we do not have, I'll just say, we do not have a sidewalk heading back east, connecting back towards like the on the border or the, the barbecue restaurant that, that's there on the corner. We do not have a sidewalk going back to the east. We do, of course, have the connection to the multi-use trail though, that goes to the west. I thought maybe that might have been the, I didn't know if that was the specific area or restaurants you were asking about.
It wasn't so much the restaurants. It was the grocery store that I think would be helpful for our riders.
Yeah. And so so, so yeah, then especially with the, I guess it's the outbound stop. Yeah, they'll have access to the buy for less there.
So this takes me back to my series of questions then. I'll save that one. So okay, so Tenth Street, that's interesting. I know I've mentioned this both at recent COTPA meetings, I know in private with you, Jason. I think why it keeps popping up in my head, can we go to the Twenty-third and Classen one, please? Okay. So the reason why I keep mentioning crosswalks and continental crosswalks and their width is those don't look very wide to me. And again, I know I'm just looking at rendering, but I just cannot stress enough how important, especially at this intersection, that crosswalks are just as wide as humanly possible. We are talking about four major connectivity points. And so that's why I keep bringing that up. If you were wondering, Jason, like why I keep asking something that seems like there's an obvious answer. Like it's because these are the, this image is what keeps coming up in my head and they just seem very, seem very similar to the, the kind of crosswalks that exist, you know, in the city presently. So I just wanted to make that voice that again here.
Yes.
The other one, can we go to the Blackwelder and Northwest Expressway one, two, please? Thank you. I'm very excited about this one, particularly as it relates to the BikeWalk OKC revisions. I suggested, though, you know, I am but one voice, I suggested that BikeWalk give very serious thought to at this particular intersection, the bike connectivity from Blackwelder, because that's a neighborhood, right? Just to the neighborhoods plural, right? Whether it's Military Park, Putnam Heights, there are neighborhoods there. And I think that someone should have access with a bike to this intersection, not just to connect to the BRT, but here's, I think, the challenge. Getting across that street on a bike to work or shop at anything at Bell Isle Station or Penn Square Mall. Like to me, that just, I, that, that is, I just feel like that's such a necessary thing. As someone who has tried my darnedest to bike to either of those two locations from Paseo. I mean, it's like the last level of a Super Mario game when you get over there. It's just impossible. So I'm just wondering on that north side of the street, like what I suggested to BikeWalk was like a cycle track. Um, you know, along that, that side of the road. So I would just voice. The need for that. Uh, because again, it's not just about the shopping across Northwest Expressway. It's about the person who's using their bike. Again, it's National Bike Month, I believe the meeting began with that. It's about someone using, I saw Mark smile with that one, thank you, Mark. Uh, but it's about the um. It's about getting the person who's using their bike as transportation to get to work. And as we just heard, we have so many jobs along this route. Um, and so I just really would like to see us think about that for this side of the road. And then that takes me to actually Councilman Stone Cypher, um, you drew my attention to something that I have. Well, two final comments. One is related to, to Mark's notes. I think it is an incredibly missed opportunity for us as a city if we do not figure out how to um, provide. Pedestrian infrastructure from Independence to Meridian. I, I, I just think that is an incredibly missed opportunity if we don't figure out a way to do that. Because again, we're not just talking about the shopping and the recreation uh, as it relates to enjoying Clark's Barbecue. Or on the border or what have you. It is about the jobs. We are talking about our service industry. Um, an industry that, you know, you know, I'll just remind everybody, but we don't need the reminder, has just been through. You know, the fires, right, during the pandemic. And so I think that that walkability component. Of someone who's using the BRT to get off there at 56th and Portland. Um, they should be able to get off right there and walk east to go to work at Clark's. And, and, and until this slide, I did not realize that that was not part of the conversation. And I, I, I'm just going to keep emphasizing, I think that is an incredibly missed opportunity. And so what we're going to end up with is we're going to have uh, workers walking along Northwest Expressway. A six-lane traffic corridor called an expressway to get to work. And that's to say nothing about families who are going, or people on dates or on their own, going to eat at any of those restaurants. Um, I think that's just an incredibly missed opportunity, and I would really like to see us. Um, rethink that in terms of sidewalk connectivity there. Had I known that that was missing, I would have proposed it in the BikeWalk OKC revisions, and maybe since I know planning staff are listening to this. Um. Count this as one of those revisions. Um, and then I would also say that from. Again, I can't stress enough, from Independence to Meridian, because there, there's Panera Bread, there's Schlotzsky's. There's just all, there's all these different. There's places, and I just think connecting people to those places uh, by foot and by bike and by BRT is just. As this is how, I, I think that's what we need to be thinking about here. Um. I would also say, and I'm going to sound like, you know, a broken record here. I'm really excited about the 15-minute frequency during peak. I remain gravely concerned about a 20-minute frequency. During off times, because I, well, first, what are the peak hours?
Peak is uh, what, Jesse, till seven?
Right.
Yeah, seven. So we'll run peak frequency until seven. All right, well, let me, let me back up. I mean, we still have to develop the operating plan, the operating budget, but. At this time, we're thinking we'll run peak until about 7:00 PM.
What time would that start, Jason?
Uh, in the, you know, in the morning, so rough, roughly 6:00 AM, perhaps earlier.
Okay, so I'm not as concerned if like, we're talking like from 6:00 AM straight through to 7:00. And that people would expect 15-minute frequency. I think that's good. My concern is that, especially considering the nightlife that we, we. We know the city has, and especially considering that route of Expressway, Classen and downtown. Um, and people being able to use the BRT to get to Plaza District for that nightlife. And I'm not even talking about like clubs and that. I'm talking like going to dinner at 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM. In Uptown, in the Asian District, in the Plaza District, in Midtown, in Bricktown, in Downtown. I really worry what happens if someone wants to use the BRT for those sorts of things. And that's for recreation and consumption. Again, the worker here should also be, right? That's what I've always loved about Embark. I think we excel at customer service. That is what you all taught me since I started serving on the Trust. Um, so I, are, what, what are possibilities for the evenings and the weekends? Because if people, I guess my point is, is if people think it's 20 minutes. They might associate that with those peak times, too. And I think it could um. You know, create a, a negative section of the entire system. That's why I really feel like we could just get that 15 minutes consistently. Um. So that's, that's, that's another thing I'd want to say.
I think, yeah, no, definitely duly noted, and we will take all that into consideration, of course, when we. Finalize our operating plan and as a COPPA trustee and council, you'll. Certainly, we'll certainly get that in front of you as soon as we have it. I do think, though, um, we'll be able to borrow from our experience with the streetcar a lot. Um, because we run, you know, peak and off-peak with streetcar. And from a, you know, marketing standpoint, um, and really trying to communicate the value of the service. Most of our messaging, if not all, is generally around that peak service time, you know, um. And I would suspect we would do the same with the BRT, you know, trying to uh, convey the difference between bus rapid transit and regular bus service. It's, hey, you know, peak frequency is 15 minutes. Um, so that's what we, I'm just saying, that's what we focus our message on. So, you know, to your point, we don't have customers thinking. Oh, well, you know, that's only 20 minutes. Um, that's not a, that's not a dramatic improvement. Um. When really, there's a, a minimal amount of hours, if you will, that we're running that, that off-peak. Timing.
I'm, yeah, again, I guess what I'm really, and it's crystallizing in my head now, I just have so many friends who work in the service industry, so many.
Mm-hmm.
Work at places like Bara Balada on Main Street, or, you know, Kitchen 32, this, that, or, you know, all these different. And they, and you know this so well because you know our customers, they are working in these, these jobs. 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12:00 PM. And I, I just think that we, we need to. My, I just think we need to really think about serving those jobs that we just heard that are along. And that those jobs are not just that traditional nine to five, they're not even close, right? Um, so that, I just really want to push us on, really want to challenge us on this. Um, topic of the worker and the timing and the frequency. And I, again, I think of. I'm not going to go there. Um, so no, I think that's very important. And then my final thing, um, I know I might not get my way on this, but I'm going to voice it uh, all the same. I'm hopeful about it, but I think it's very important that those new sidewalks that are coming along the route. Uh, Expressway and on Classen, I know the budget doesn't allow for trees as a canopy, which was a word I heard earlier in this presentation, but. That's something that I'm working on to try and secure, because I believe very, very strongly. From all of my years serving on COPPA and attending these transit conferences. That the pedestrian in that first mile, last mile from their home to the wonderful new stations. Um, that that walk or bike ride needs to be as accommodating and pleasant as possible. And trees on a prairie, which is where we live, right, adds to that experience. And so that's, I, I just want anyone who's listening to know that. We're all, we are thinking about that. I think that's very important. And then to conclude on this topic. I would hate for anyone who just heard me walk us through my questions and comments to think that this is like a, a negative. Uh, um, reaction to the presentation or to bus rapid transit. Um, I know in Oklahoma, we have a habit of, everyone thinks we're very nice, we're a nice people. And I think a lot of that comes from, we just, we, we just say nice things to each other, and there's often a lack of like constructive criticism. That's just not the world I come from. I'm an Oklahoman, but I come from like a film criticism background. So I can love a movie, I can love Casablanca or Citizen Kane, and I can point out how we can, how it can be even better. So that's all that's going on here. I, it's very important to me that no one mistake. My constructive criticism from the last little bit here is like a negative thing. I hope I've not communicated any sort of negativity. I'm just trying to make sure that this um. Nearly $30 million investment um, meets the potential that we know it can. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a few.
I have a couple of questions as well.
Okay, I'll, can I, I'll, I'll go first. Um, and I just, because I just want to also just say, second to everything. Councilperson Cooper said, so I'm just gonna, there are a few questions that that um, helped check the box for, um. And I think sort of dovetailing off of that um, pedestrian experience, pedestrian experience conversation. Um, and I think 23rd and Classen is a really easy example for me, at least. Um. Because looking at the, the overhead look of it, you know, like, obviously appreciate the ADA compliance. Because it, that intersection right now is kind of a mess with uh, consistency of all of the um, the corners. Um, but I think something that I am consistently seeing in those, and I don't know if. This is maybe for a later conversation, and this is kind of more of a, a higher view, but. Even opportunities to create curbs that really bump out and um, and make the walking distance between. Um, like while you're actually on the street in the crosswalk, smaller. Um, even though I know those intersections are quite wide, that, that might not feel like a huge difference, but even just that. Um. That little bit more opportunity for cars not to take those turns at really high speeds because they feel like a, a ramp. Um, just any opportunity to really build up that curb and make that experience um. While people are waiting to cross the street, but also in the crossing, making it a little more friendly. So I was just curious what opportunities on those sort of intersection improvements, I think along all of the stops. Um, that were, are we exploring those? Like, I even saw, like, there's a slip lane on one of the, I don't know if it's like. It's, it's one of the, it might be the Black Belt Welder one, where there's like a slip lane that gets you on a Northwest Expressway. E- even opportunities to close things like that to just fewer points of contact, I guess, for pedestrians and. Vehicles um, to, to collide. I'm just curious about if those are opportunities we're exploring as part of this infrastructure. Or what intersection upgrades.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll answer to that one. Uh, yeah, we uh, we have talked about uh, some bumpouts um, in the downtown area. Um, we could expand that to. You know, other places along the, the corridor.
I did, I just, I would appreciate exploring that, because I think even places that aren't downtown, where we, I guess, aren't. In the mindset of prioritizing pedestrians, um, I think it, that's like where we, where we want to go. Because I think to Councilperson Cooper's point, like, if the, if the experience getting to and from feels like you're taking your life in your own hands. Or you're, you know, just those little things that really create a different experience for people, I think will. Lend to and contribute to the success of, of utilization. And that kind of leads me to my. Other question, which is a very nitpicky and very specific, but, and I think we've had this conversation before, it's been a little bit. Um, but the, so on both the newer um, bus stops, as well as the streetcar stops. It's, it's a glass, there, all, everything's kind of a glass panel. Um, and. Especially in the summer, but anytime that it's really sunny and the sun is low in the sky. That it, I know you went out and like measured the temperature and it didn't say the temperature changed it, but it feels like you are a. This last summer, I was like, I'm going to really think about this, I'm going to go stand outside and, and like, and so I don't know if it's just like. On your body, it's, it, it's changing temperature, but the air, I don't, I don't know the science of it, but really the experience is, I just. And I talk to people when I'm sitting at the bus stop, and we're all like, we're going to stand over here. And so just any opportunities there are to build in shading, and I don't know, you know, obviously visibility is important, but. But just any, I don't know, and I was looking through the um, design guide, I don't know if there's any opportunities to add anything. Um, uh, or if that's kind of like an in stone document, but just something, something that can provide some shading. Because especially in the summer when that sun is lower in the sky and your back is to it, or you're, or it's on the side, it's just. I don't even know how to describe it, but it like, is so hot and um, and so I end up like actually waiting outside of the actual shelter. Um, just because it's, it just feels so hot. So I just wanted to, I know that's like a really specific thing, but. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up again in case there's opportunities to, to think through.
Yeah, no.
Little amenity changes, um, that again, hopefully will improve this experience and utilization of it.
We will, we will look at other, other options or ways to, to mitigate that, yeah.
All I got, thank you so much.
Okay, is there a way we can pull up the, the slide that shows 30th and Classen, please? Thank you. So I, I have a couple of acquaintances who have reached out to me concerning um, this area. And some of the bus stops proposed that would end up actually blocking their businesses. Uh, specifically as a, a faux restaurant, they're on 30th and uh, they're just uh, off of 30th in Classen and. And um. It, it's just going to end up being something that also blocks the restaurant. Um, he's reached out to his. Uh, excuse me, the assistant. Let me read this, I'm going to apologize. Uh, the Assistant City Manager's office trying to get some information. I, he says he hasn't really gotten any calls back. Um, and he's having an, an issue with being able to get some more information on it. Um, are we going to be blocking driveways into businesses with adding these things?
So it varies from location to location, but there are, there are some driveways that will be uh, potentially closing. Um. Uh, in this particular one, um, in this particular one, we have met with the owner of that restaurant a couple of different times. In fact, I'm uh, working on a, a meeting to go see the owner uh, and visit with him myself about. Uh, transit and his concerns. Um, again, we are just at 30% design, so um. You know, we have opportunities to, to look at other locations. There are some places, though, like, like 30th and Classen, I think is a good one. If we're going to serve the intersection and we don't put it, say, for example, in front of this restaurant, then, then it's like, well, where do we move it? And we've got to block somebody's drive. It, I mean, it's almost like if we don't block that person's driveway. A driveway has to be blocked if we're going to put a stop location there. Um.
Is there not a way of sharing bus stops with current ones that are already in place? Um, or anything, so we can rotate which, you know, they know which bus is coming at that time so that we can avoid blocking any business?
I would say, uh, I wouldn't necessarily think we would be blocking a business. Um, I mean, you know, the other side of it is where we, I guess you could also say we're potentially bringing customers to the business and. And I think, you know, a lot of the businesses along the corridor see it that way, uh, and some don't. However, that's why we are uh, meeting with every single business owner and or property owner along the route. We have a community engagement liaison uh, on staff that is doing nothing but that. Uh, so that, so that we can hear things like this from business owners before any final decisions are made. So um, the question about whether we can combine bus stops or not, um, with the bus rapid transit. Um, the platforms are so much larger than the existing bus stops that. You know, it would be difficult to foot, to put a BRT platform in the same footprint that we have for a regular bus stop in, in most cases. Um, and then um. Again, we're not intentionally trying to block anyone's business. Um. Again, I think it's just a matter of, of how the particular business owner looks at it. Is it bringing customers to their business, or do they think it's impeding visibility from the street? But again, we're committed, and I think with the Oklahoma City Streetcar as our, kind of our track record, if you will. Um, we're, we're all, we are all about working with the business owners. We can't always make 100% of the people 100% happy, but. But we do make adjustments to the project based on feedback from those along. but we do make adjustments to the project based on feedback from those along the corridor. That's why we have a stakeholder work group made of people along the corridor. That's why we're meeting with all the business owners. And if there's a solution here that we can come to with this particular restaurant owner or really any business along the route that has concerns. You know, we're gonna, we're definitely going to do that. We've had an opportunity to engage a business at forty second and classen that had some similar concerns. And, you know, we evaluated that intersection and there's a lot of strong likelihood we'll be moving that platform. So so we are, we are open to try to work with the business owners and and I'm happy to brief your counsel on the outcome of my my meeting with with this this gentleman here.
I'd appreciate that, please. I I know specifically on this one, I mean, there's an entrance on thirtieth to his restaurant as well as classen, but classen being the major thoroughfare that it is is in no comparison to thirtieth whatsoever, and it would completely get jammed up in this specific situation. So anything that you are able to to find out or discuss with the owner, I would greatly appreciate knowing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then I have a couple of follow ups to the two other counselors, if I may. One is, I want to echo Councilwoman Hammond notes about the bump outs. I mean, because literally in my mind, and I've already said this to Jason, like in my mind, I think of like the OKC Boulevard and the as it is right next to Caesar Tell Park, like wide crosswalks and just these wide open like spaces there at those corners where people can gather as they're waiting to cross the street. So and now that I'm looking at thirtieth and classen, I would challenge us to try and execute that at these intersections all across the the route. Because I think that we are now moving a public transit enhancement into a part of our city that has not seen that sort of, you know, enhancement since it began all those years ago with the streetcar that used to be on classen, right? So I think that this has to be like a reintroduction. And I can tell you walkability and transit and homelessness and education, I've said it before, these were the top issues and when I was knocking doors. So walkability is very much top of mind. So again, when I look at thirtieth here are the possibility of a signalized forty second street or again, that black welder. I would like to see each one of those intersections just wide continental crosswalks and then some sort of bump out that says to a family of four or six or a couple that as they're waiting for that light to turn green for them to walk across those crosswalks that they just feel safe even waiting there. And think about it. You know, you look at this grassy field across the street from you know, where we're talking about right now, and development itself, I think improves when those intersections have more gathering places for pedestrians. I think it allows for more people to take advantage being able to walk to shops. So that that's just my challenge. So I really appreciate Councilwoman Hammond's comment. And then to Counselor Carter's comment, I actually received an email over the weekend for me to call the owner of that particular restaurant. Um, Jason, real quick, um, as I know, there's often a lot of confusion when it comes to trans property values, do they go up or down when transit comes to a neighbor like when BRT or streetcar? Just curious.
Generally speaking, BRT, streetcar results in increased property values.
Increased property values. Good. I just want to make sure I I understood that correctly. And I just also want to remind everybody who's following along this presentation. And I know we just went in depth with this back in October with the zoning case, but I just want to really remind everybody. Might be not a familiar thing I'm about to say to people who aren't familiar with transit conversations. Have not lived in cities where there's that kind of reliable transit, but that sidewalk infrastructure that's coming to classen is going to bring foot traffic of people who live in the neighborhoods around there right now, my neighborhood, Paseo, Putnam Heights, Military, Helm Farm. We are going to be the people walking classen. We already go to these restaurants because they are amazing. We already go to CVS because they have the basic needs of the individual. We go to Lee's, right? Because they are also incredible. That sidewalk infrastructure is about to become a game changer. It is going to allow people access to these businesses in a way we've not had before. In other words, property values will rise. Revenue to these businesses will rise. And what must also go away in this conversation, I will say, is stigma. Stigma about who uses public transportation. I use public transportation. I am an adjunct professor, a former middle school college preparation teacher right here in Oklahoma City Public Schools. Councilwoman Hammond works in mental health. Is a councilperson, uses public transportation. Councilman Greenwell, an accountant, uses public transportation. This stigma must also disappear from our minds. And quite frankly, that stigma. We must really stop and ask ourselves as the beginning of this meeting, the whole meeting began, we talked about the Oklahoma standard. We love to talk about the Oklahoma standard. We just came out of the anniversary of the OKC bombing. We love to talk about helping our neighbors. Those without a home experiencing homelessness are also our neighbors. And that's all I want to say about that. Thank you.
Okay. If that's everything on that item, Councilman Cooper, we'll start with you because you wanted to talk about items AT and AU.
Oh, not so much talk. I spoke a whole lot there, but all necessary talking. Um, I have just have questions about it. I just wanted to learn a little bit more, please.
Councilman Cooper, this is Eric Quinger, Director of Public Works. I'm happy to respond to both the items on AT and AU. These are two ordinances to be introduced for final hearing on May twenty fifth that will add new parking opportunities for Pinkston Dental, which is a location you and I have actually visited on an on an occasion to to research some of their access items, but this is going to establish a reserved parking space. It's also going to add some ninety degree angle parking on street that's at that location. And so Traffic Commission has recommended these for approval by the city council. One of the items AT is specifically for the physically disabled space. The item AU is for the ninety degree angle parking.
Well, so our story just continues over there with that business. That's wonderful. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate the update. That was very helpful.
Okay, and now items AW through BB, Councilwoman Knight, she wanted to talk about that?
Yes, I know, Mr. Winger. You might as well just take it away.
Happy to assist. Thank you, Councilwoman. So items AW and AX are for the same location. These are going to be on Walnut Avenue, and they are for new on-street parking that will help serve La Baguette, the Black Walnut Restaurant, and the gray sweater that are on the west side of that block. It's a request that we've received and we've been working on this request for some time, but we were finally able to get it assembled and presented to the Traffic Commission, recommended to the council. So it is new on-street parallel parking. It is also for two-hour time limited, and it also includes an ADA accessible space that are in both those items.
If you don't mind, I know we had a couple of others that are in the ward as well.
Yep, absolutely. So let me touch on the final four, and these are going to be AY through item BD. And again, they are also all for the same location. This is for the Rose Rock Development Partners, and they've submitted a request. This is going to be Broadway Avenue just south of the Oklahoma City Boulevard on the east side. I mean, they are planning a new development there that is also going to add new on-street parking. There's two-hour time limited. There is fifteen-minute time limited. There's an ADA accessible space. And then there's the final item, which is forty-five degree angle parking that will be located that location. There's a map that's included for each of the items. It's the same, but it'll show that location South Broadway, just south of the Oklahoma City Boulevard on the east portion of the road.
Okay. If there's nothing else on that, then we have item BD, which had a scheduled presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So this morning we have Zach Craig on. He's the new president of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And Convention and Visitors Bureau is a great partner for the city and does great work with us in helping promote the city. I really appreciate Zach coming on as a new member. I know he's hit the ground running, getting better acquainted with the Oklahoma City today and really appreciate all that he's doing to try to work to lead us as we come out of the pandemic and we're seeing things change. So today he's going to present the budget for the CVB.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for your time this morning. As as Mr. City Manager mentioned, I'm Zach Craig. I'm the new president of the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau. And want to present to you today two two items on the agenda. One is for requested amendment to the current fiscal year twenty one's event sponsorship fund. And secondly, wanted to introduce and propose to you our fiscal twenty-two marketing plan and budget. So if you'll give me one moment, I will share my screen. If someone would just let me know if they can see my screen.
Yes, we can see it.
So the the first agenda item is item BC, and that's the request for amending the current year's event sponsorship fund. I'm sure that you recall, this is the one-eleventh portion of the lodging tax that we have. The current budget for that is one million. In the request, after going through our commission, is to increase it by three hundred and forty-six thousand, one oh five. As you see on the screen, previous years, this budget amounted for the one-eleventh fund has been at one point four million or greater. And while there's there's certainly been a lot of devastation in the hospitality industry, as you're well aware of over the last twelve months, we we have been more fortunate than most as our city. There's a few sectors that have continued to to help us in aid or recovery, and that's sports. And certainly the equine industry. And mostly because of equine continuing with their shows and us gaining some shows due to other states, surrounding states shutting down. This is the reason for the the request to amend the event sponsorship for fiscal twenty one. In addition to that agenda item, I want to move forward and speak with you just briefly before answering questions about our proposal for the marketing plan for fiscal twenty-two. My team and I have spent a lot of time over the last sixty days in speaking with industry experts, speaking with our hotel community about their outlook, and also spending a lot of time with the Budget Department at the City of Oklahoma City, and specifically Doug Dower has provided a lot of guidance for us. And with that, we feel like we've come up with a very sound and conservative fiscal twenty-two budget. Here you'll see on the screen on the bottom left, the projections from a nationwide occupancy at fifty-five percent for calendar year twenty-one and up to sixty-five percent for calendar year twenty-two, which is very close to where this city was pre-pandemic. Oklahoma City has really been trending these these averages as we've been watching these recent trends during the pandemic. So after that guidance from the people I just spoke of, we are presenting with you today, and if you look in your packet, this begins on page one thousand nine hundred and eleven. We're presenting revenue amount or requesting five million twenty-eight thousand for revenues, four point nine of which is being requested from the City of Oklahoma City for the operating budget for the four-eleventh of the lodging tax. In addition to that, we are we are requesting to draw down the in-house Chamber of Commerce Reserve Fund by an additional a hundred thousand, which would equal or sum our total contract revenue to just over five billion dollars for fiscal twenty-two. In addition to that, the one-eleventh, we are proposing, as if you follow along in your packet, to increase that amount from the current budget of a million to one point two for fiscal year twenty-two. Part of the monies for the operating budget, the four-elevens, is to focus on numerous strategies, but a few of them I want to highlight for you today. And that's to begin building our staff here at the CVB. We had a staff of twenty-four before the pandemic. We're currently at a staff of fourteen. And we're going to conservatively build our staff back in multiple departments from marketing to PR to sales. We're very fortunate as a city that we've continued to progress with our hospitality assets during this time, and that includes the First Americans Museum, the Oklahoma Contemporary, and what's going on at Will Rogers World Airport. And we need new imagery of those assets as we move forward. We're excited about installing some new points of interest tracking from a marketing perspective to make sure that our new strategies are very data-driven, and we're using our resources well. And although our current website has really assisted us over the last five years, it's time to redesign that and make sure that we're state of the art as it relates to having a very functional website that's capable on any device that you may have. We have a program called Certified Tourism Ambassador here in the city. And it's time to relook at that and breathe new life into it post-pandemic and make sure that all of our customer-facing positions are excited and are competent about all the diverse assets that our city has to offer, no matter what's in their backyard. And then finally, and I could spend a lot of time on this one, is with all the wonderful improvements that happened that's happened with our city as of late, it is time to extend our reach beyond a traditional dry market audience, and we've got several tactics to do so. Just to expand off of what I just mentioned on budget priorities is some of these strategies. I alluded to being data-driven, and we are in conversations right now with a company called Zartico to really provide us new analytics and really to make sure that we're measuring our successes, no matter what ward our visitors are traveling within. We would like to reestablish our Modern Frontier campaign, and we want to focus both on visitation, but also within the local community. This campaign was rolled out in February of last year, and it was well researched. Unfortunately, it was just a challenging time to roll out a marketing campaign right before the pandemic. One thing I mentioned earlier, but I want to expand on it, is really maximizing our assets here in Oklahoma City. And that really is far reaching from downtown. And includes many diverse assets that we have currently and assets that are on the horizon. One of which, for example, is off of Southeast eighty-nine Street and I thirty-five, and it's the Blessed Stanley Rother Shrine that in my eyes is going to be a wonderful tribute to a man of good deeds from our community. And I think it's really going to resonate with our visitors. I've heard it time and time again, since I've been here over the last eighty days, in that when people come and visit our city, they fall in love with the destination and our people. And so with that, we've armed this budget with resources to really get travelers. we've armed this budget with resources to really get travel writers, influencers, traditional media, meeting planners here to visit our city and visit with our wonderful citizens. And then finally, the tour operator sector of our business has had a challenging time over the last 12-plus months. And it's our, it's our strategy to work with our local attractions to make sure that we aid that recovery, and we fill up these local attractions. I want to leave you with two slides before pausing for any questions or comments, but just some inspirational slides about all the wonderful assets, again, for our citizens to enjoy and our visitors to enjoy as we take this to market. These are the current assets that we've recently unveiled. And then finally, as you all know, from really the front gates of our city at Will Rogers World Airport, to the brand-new First Americans Museum, we have so much to be excited about here at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm really grateful and laser-focused to lead this team through the next several months. And so with that said, I'll close my presentation, and I'll open it up for any comments, as well as questions.
Thank you, Zach.
The only question, I'm sorry. The only, well, thank you for the presentation. So two things, I know, as we look at, and we're looking at the presentation as far as the budget request and the, the book plan that was sent to the council, I want to just say thank you for being intentional of diversity and inclusion, because I see it here. So hopefully, we'll see it as far as our chamber is concerned, as we're looking at, at how we expand on the things we would like to see across our city that makes us great, as far as just celebrating different nationalities, cultures, just people. So, and the attractions, of course, that, that are coming to our city. And I know with the ambassador program, please keep me in the loop when you are working to expand that. Definitely want to make sure we get a lot of our residents in, in the ward where I serve, because there's so many different pieces of gems, should I say, that I would really like our ambassadors to be a part of telling that story and that fabric of our city. So, and, and thank you for saying yes to this position in the middle of such a time as this. So I know we're looking forward to some great things happening with the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman.
Hi, Zach. Mark Stonecifer here. Thanks for a great presentation. I know we got to talk a couple of weeks ago about a convention we're trying to bring to Oklahoma City. And so the one thing I'd say, that all of the council people are willing to assist, will make calls, will go with you to visit with people, we want to see you be very, very successful. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmen, for your comments, and also for the referral a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I'll just, what we just heard from Councilman Stonecifer and Councilwoman Nice. First, Find the Avid Teachers Conference. That was my former college prep program. It's a national program, and us, us avid teachers, we would drive down to Dallas, and, and part of the convention was at the Omni. So that's how I was first someone who learned about what the Omni is. By the way, I'm not teaching avid right now with OKCPS, so this isn't, they didn't ask me to do this. I just know that those avid teachers would probably love to be part of, of the conversation. And then especially to echo what Councilwoman Nice was saying about just like that, that diversity part of this. I mean, look, Ward 2, and it kind of goes back to what I was saying earlier about Mr. Stewart and Commissioner Johnson, but like, you know, there's, there's so much when I leave Oklahoma City and go travel other places, and you ever want to see me actually be on the defensive, it's when someone starts talking bad about my city. That's when, that's when it happens. Because there's so much here. And I would just encourage you all to keep communication open with the districts in Ward 2. And I'm not picking on the other wards, I'm just talking about Ward 2 for now. But our Asian District, and that refugee story of the 70s, this is something that Toon Nguyen and I talk about quite a bit. They, they're, this younger generation really, really wants to tell that story of perseverance from their elders. And so I think any opportunity to highlight what makes our Asian District even possible and so unique, and keep going back to that delicious spa, but I think just highlighting that to the rest of the country as a, as a tourism thing, the Paseo, our 39th Street LGBT, our LGBT community even outside of that district, it is our community. This is so important. There are so many LGBTQ folk and their allies who literally are always looking for a safe space to exist, to enjoy a hamburger, free from harassment. And keep in mind, we're living in an actual world where there are versions of concentration camps for LGBT people right now in Chechnya. So when I say safe space, I mean that. That's not me being cute and hyperbolic. And then you look at like the Britten District, the history, I'm just saying like, it just put me to work. I'm happy to be an ambassador for the different districts that call Ward 2 home and the communities, the community for them too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for your feedback. I'm sitting here taking notes as we speak. I've had multiple conversations already with Toon from the Asian District, and I'm thrilled to elevate our storytelling and our content, really across our wards and across our wonderful, wonderful districts as they are.
All right. Well, thank you, Zach. Great job. And I believe this is your first presentation to council, so formal welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Last thing that anyone wanted to discuss on the consent docket was item BL, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I know there's Mr. Todd. We had a special meeting for our Citizens Advisory Board. So if you don't mind, Mr. Todd, I just want you to just kind of describe what changes are being made and, and the expectation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. As you, as you said, there was a special meeting for more information on this. So this item was looked at extensively by both the subcommittee and the advisory board. So this is a change that admittedly is coming late to the convention center, but I want to emphasize that it's not to fix a mistake, it's not a design flaw, it's not an issue like that. But it's really, one of the, the things that we often see is operators start operating the building, they see some needs that would help them operate the, the building more efficiently, and, and maybe would serve the citizens better. So we currently have two elevators that serve this area. So let me back up. This is the area around the ballroom. And if you recall, there's two floors in there. We call them the third floor and the fourth floor, but they're really only four feet in elevation difference. But to get from the third floor to the fourth floor, there's some steps, but there's also two elevators. And it was suggested that ramps would be very advantageous if there's a larger crowd there of people who might need those. So that's what this item is for, is, is to put in some ramps on each side, north and south side of the, of the ballroom, so that the access will be a little better through there.
Thank you. So we approve this unanimously through our Citizens Advisory Board. So I just wanted, Mr. Todd, to at least explain to you all why we had to have the special meeting. And can you tell us the date when we will probably have this complete?
Yeah, this is going to be a bit lengthy because of the nature of the work, being in an active facility, and current delivery on, on some materials is getting lengthy. So this will extend into September or so. They're going to build a, basically encapsulate that area, building a plywood box around that area. And one of the discussions was that this would be disruptive, but we feel like right now it's less disruptive with less activities than I think all of us hope there will be in about a year from now, or maybe shortly after that. So it will extend until the, the early fall. But we feel like this is a good time to do it.
Okay. So thank you for that. So I just want to make sure everyone understands the expectation of this particular project. So just sometimes you just got to do what you got to do. Make sure it's ready for the people and better for the people. So we appreciate you all for finding this and, and making sure that we're working in a better effort for our community and our conventions, and for the sake of our convention. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes the items that we had pulled up for any conversation on the consent docket. So we could take a motion now. I have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
I'm having a little difficulty. I vote yes, Mayor.
Okay, passes unanimously. And that brings us to item 8, the concurrence docket. We have items A through K. We can take with one motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to look at deferring item K for at least two weeks. I am scheduled to meet with, have a meeting with Sky Dweller this afternoon. So I would just like to defer that as I get more information about them and what they're doing.
Do we want to, okay. And, and of course, on a concurrence docket, technically, we're not really doing anything but acknowledging that the, that the trust has already approved it. But
We've done it before, so I'd like to do it again.
Okay. Does this, I, I would just like to make sure this doesn't cause any complications for this economic development project. I have no idea of the timetable. I just want to hear from Joanna or somebody about that, I guess.
Yeah. I don't believe it'll create any questions or concerns because of the fact that this is already approved.
Fair enough. Okay. Okay. Well, so that would be a motion then for a deferral of item 8K. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That item, you're welcome. That item is deferred to the meeting in two weeks. Okay, for the remainder of the items, item A through J is there a motion for a docket? Or in this case, concurrence. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, nine, item nine, items requiring separate votes. We have item 9A. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at Planning Commission at 3601 South Council Road, going from R1 to I-1. Councilwoman Young.
Amy, do we have anybody scheduled to speak?
We, we do not. And I'll go ahead and say upfront, nobody has signed up to speak on items A through F.
Okay. I move to her.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9B is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 12101 North I-35 Service Road, going from SPUD 810 to I-1. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'm pretty sure the applicant is on the line. Very is. Mr. Box, if you'll just walk me through this application and what the applicant plans to do with this development, please.
Yes, again. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So this is, this is an application for an I-1 development. The, the current site is zoned SPUD 810. My client has owned this property for quite some time, and you'll notice that surrounding the site, it's all zoned C-4, there's some C-3 to the south, there's some highway commercial zoning to the north. We're not sure how it happened. A tenant of my client at some point rezoned the property to the spud. My client believes, you know, not, not with his permission. He went to seek tenants and found out that the spud won't allow, for really anything that you would, you would expect to find along I-35. We met with staff. It was suggested that we go with I-1. I-1 is obviously less intense than I-2, and specifically doesn't allow outdoor storage. So I-1 was viewed as more appropriate for the I-35 corridor. It is consistent with the comp plan. Staff did recommend approval. There are no technical evaluations, and Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously.
And thank you. And I see there were no protests. So with that, I will move for approval.
All right. Got a motion. In a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. 9C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 3850 South Prospect Avenue, going from C-3 and I-1 to C-3. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I do understand and see what the, what this will be. So I'm okay with that. With that, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9D, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1002 Southwest 138th Street, going from PUD 1480 to PUD 1809. This was, item was deferred from our previous regular meeting. Councilman Greenlaw.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We, last week, with the resident who voiced some concerns at our prior council meeting, those issues were resolved. And so at this time, there's no protest. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. So I would recommend this for approval.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes as soon as you have that opportunity. There we go. Passes unanimously. 9E is a resolution receiving an amendment to the comprehensive plan, removing the urban future land use typology area lair from the urban low-intensity base lute designation on an approximately 361-acre tract north of Southwest 59th Street and between South Fair Road and South County Line Road. Councilwoman Young.
Having seen no protests on this, David, do you have anything you'd like to add today?
No. As it relates to, to the comp plan, the, the reason for the change is, at the time that the site was originally zoned, we did not have access to public sewer and public water. The site now has access to water and sewer because of the development that has happened to the west of the subject site, which is what allowed this expansion to occur.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. 9F, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. All right. Nine F, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at one oh one oh one Southwest Fifty-Ninth going from P U D fifteen eighty-nine to P U D eighteen twelve. Councilwoman Young.
Mr. Box, you describe the development.
Yes. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. So this is a development that has, has a creek that runs through the middle. The west side of the development is now able to be served by public sewer. And so we will have traditional single-family lots to the west of the creek. It's worth noting that P U D seventeen twenty-four, which is west of the subject site, is a residential development that actually has lots of a smaller size than what we propose. East of the creek and any lots that aren't able to be serviced with public sewer will be half acre. The site is currently all half acre. So the half acre lots are, we believe, compatible. To the south of Fifty-Ninth is, of course, the city of Mustang, not Oklahoma City. You have a mix of single-family, both traditional size and larger half acre type lots. So we believe this to be compatible with the area. And in keeping with, with the, the rapidly changing area that, that is the, you know, Kilpatrick Turnpike in this part of the city. So it was recommended for approval by staff as well as Planning Commission.
Thank you, David. And I am sure that for the residents of Southwest Oklahoma City, might be paying attention to this as it relates to Mustang Creek. The, the typical drainage review process will occur at the time of development services being asked for building permits. So with all of that noted, I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Nine G is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at one four eight zero zero South Sooner Road going from P U D fourteen twenty-two to S P U D twelve ninety-seven. And Councilman Stone, we do have the, an attorney representing the applicant, someone who signed up to speak also in favor of the applicant and a protester.
Right. Why don't we go ahead and, go ahead and hear from the protester first, please?
Okay. Hear from the protester first? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. All right then. Nathan Williams.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Nathan.
Yes, sir.
Your name and address, please.
Team seven oh one, Ammon Valley Drive. When I originally purchased the house in two thousand and fourteen, I was told that changing. One of my other issues was that seven, open from seven in the morning to eleven at night would interfere with my work hours because I work for the Department of Defense. I'm a retired disabled vet also. But I work for the Department of Defense and having cars coming in and out from behind my home on a daily basis would interfere with my rest. Not to mention also Deputy Chief Butler is, is directly behind her house also. She's the Deputy Chief of Police for Oklahoma City. So also I got an issue within, it may increase rodents, going to increase traffic. Then when it was originally zoned, I'm not sure if they're taking to effect that every house has a air rated system for wastewater. And when my neighbor's wastewater system goes off, if I'm walking in my backyard, I normally go in the house. So that mean that people who come there to eat sitting in the parking lot of Sonic will be sprayed with wastewater at different time depending on which way the wind direction is going. So I'm not sure if they took that into account. That we don't have a city sewer system that every backyard has a wastewater system and is closer to that fence line. So based off the drawings that I see, I'm not sure I hope that that's going to be. And that's pretty much, I'm, I'm really, you know, when I, when I bought the house, I had no idea there's going to put a restaurant behind my house. I've never spent this much on a house before. And I, with cheaper homes that I own, I never had a restaurant behind my house. And I think it's going to be disruptive to some people in the neighborhood. Then not to mention the health effects of putting an unhealthy restaurant behind you. You think about obesity, you think about heart disease, you think about diabetes. And when we look at the Oklahoma standard, we really should be looking out more for our neighbors' health instead of just putting something there. So if it was going to be something more healthier, that would have probably been different. But not to mention also the restaurant would also attract more rodents to the neighborhood. And so when I originally bought, moved here, they said it was a possibility that they was going to build a storage there. No one ever said they would be putting a restaurant behind my house. The reason I bought the house is because I love the country environment. I could look out my backyard and I could see cows. But now it's going to completely change. You're going to have young kids who are going to pull into the parking lot who's going to be blasting their music at any time because that's what kids do. And as a disabled vet and as a veteran, I really hope that you would take that into some consideration that my property is going to affect my property value. And that's just not something I want in my backyard. And then because I care about other people, I don't want them being exposed to the wastewater systems. That's going to be, when the wind blows, it become airborne. Each septic system, system here is about ten years old. So that mean that wastewater is not being cleaned as well as it used to be. Over. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, Nathan.
Todd, do you want to call up the people who've signed up for the applicant now?
Yeah, please.
All right. So we have Doug Wallets and Ben Kirk. And it's not entirely clear to me who's who or who, who of those two wants to speak first, but I think they're both.
Why don't we start with Doug?
Okay. Yeah, Doug, pass, I mean, push star six.
All right. Good morning, Mayor Holt and Councilman Stone and the rest of the city council. This is Doug Wallets. I am a consultant that's working on behalf of the, the owner developer, fifteen oh four Southwest Hundred and Thirty-Third Street. I believe Mr. Kirk with Donner Sandal Sanders. Daniel Anderson is also on the call on our client's behalf. So this, this area has always been zoned under an existing P U D fourteen twenty-two to allow for restaurants and eating establishments. And I think that dates back to two thousand and ten with the original property owner submitting that PUD. It allows for, again, like commercial development, including restaurants. And, and my client has simply submitted a revised spud agreement, S P U D twelve ninety-seven, whereby he would like to add the drive-through, drive-in restaurant uses to the southernmost one point three eight acres, ultimately to allow for the development of a Sonic drive-in. We, we did work closely with the Planning Commission to incorporate their suggestions into the updated design statement, which encompasses S P U D twelve ninety-seven. The, the following enhancements were made relative to the existing PUD zoning. So we'll, we'll limit the drive-through use to the southernmost one point three eight acres of the site. There would be a eight-foot board-on-board overlap style fence along the eastern side of the drive-in property. The landscape buffer was increased from five feet to ten feet along the eastern boundary. We'll incorporate trees with, at twenty feet on center. The speakers were limited to a minimum distance of seventy feet from the residential property zone. And to Mr. Williams' comment, that these houses do all have aerobic septic systems. We have filed for an alternative water use permit whereby we'll be granted authority for a, our own septic system as well that will border the commercial Tinker Federal Credit Union property to the south. But we, we are very aware of that. And also, as it relates to concern about rodents, we have also agreed to move the dumpster enclosure from the existing PUD's requirement of twenty-five feet from the residential property zone to fifty feet from the residential property zone. So farther away. And, and that will be on the Tinker Federal Credit Union side, not the residential neighbor's side as well. So we've, we've done, you know, we've worked very closely with the Planning Commission, incorporated all of their suggestions in this revised spud agreement. And, you know, they passed unanimously in March with the Planning Commission. I can tell you after visiting with some of the neighbors, the, the consensus seemed to be that there was favorability for this project. A lot of the neighbors have teenage kids as well, and we're excited about the opportunity for them to have a place to, to be employed. So we're just respectfully presenting that with the rezoning under S P U D twelve ninety-seven today for the council's consideration.
Thanks, Doug. Can you tell me, just real quickly, what's the, the total land size?
The, the total land size is one point, well, for the, for the owner developer's entire acreage over there, it's four point three three acres. The Sonic would go on, on one point three eight acres. And this is really, that's a fairly sizable parcel for a Sonic to go on, especially this, the smaller footprint Sonic that, that the developer would build. But we need that green space. And there will be a lot of green space here as a result of the septic system.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you said we had another person, I believe, sign up.
So that was, that was Doug. Is Ben Kirk on the line? We have a Ben Kirk. Are you there, Ben? You pushed star six. Okay. All right. Well, that's it, Ben. Todd.
All right. Thank you. As Nathan Williams, are you still on the line?
Yes, sir.
I guess. Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Were you aware of, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me ask you a question real quick. There are certain things that, that the Planning Commission requested of the developer before approving this item. Let me just list these real quick. There's four, four major items here. Speakers will be located at least seventy feet from any residential property. The landscape buffer went from five to ten feet. There will be an eight-foot board-on-board overlap style fencing between this property and the residential properties. And then also the limit to drive-through to the southernmost one point three eight acres of the site. Were you aware of any of these changes to it, or?
Sir, even, even looking at it, when you look at the map that they have of the houses, the house that has the highest setback is my house. So they literally almost putting it directly in my backyard.
When you say that. All right. Let me make sure that I got your address, your house number correctly. Is it one four seven oh one?
So no one from the planning committee came to my house to visit me or to talk to me, sir.
Okay. I'm just saying, your, your house number, is it one four seven oh one?
Yeah, fourteen seven oh one. That's correct, sir. So if they said they did.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is, one, is be able to see like where exactly your residence is in relation to this. So what I'm going to do, so what I would like to do is go ahead and make a motion to defer this item for two weeks. So that I can visit with Mr. Williams and also make sure that I understand exactly which of his, which of those properties is his.
Okay. Let's bring that, that up then. All right. There it is. Motion to defer item nine G for two weeks. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. That brings us to nine H. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at twenty-three forty-eight Southwest Thirty-Ninth Street from O two to S P U D thirteen oh two. And doesn't look like anyone has signed up to speak. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant available?
Yes, sir. This is Tim Johnson with Johnson and Associates. Morning, Sheridan.
How are you?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Oh, so this tract of land has been zoned O two for decades. And so the office development to the east is, owns this tract. And it is, there's never been an attraction to put in any more offices along there. So we are surrounded on the west and south by duplex developments. So the owner of this tract would like to do duplexes. And we did get a unanimous approval. We did ask, are we, there were four technical evaluations, I believe, and we agreed to those.
Okay, thank you. And that was all I was going to ask is that you all are in agreement with the technical evaluation. So as you mentioned, it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. So I would recommend this for approval.
All right. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item nine I is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at one three seven zero zero South Santa Fe going from double A to S P U D thirteen oh three. Back to you, Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Mayor.
And no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. And I believe David's on the line. He's representing the applicant. So I don't have any questions unless you wanted to say anything, David, concerning this proposal.
No, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is an area that we're seeing a lot of growth in retail and commercial. So I think it fits in well. And I would recommend this for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Nine J is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for denial. This is changing the name of Hertz Quell Springs Parkway, extending from Quell Springs Parkway to Northwest Hundred and Fifty-Shree to Bogart Parkway. Councilman Stone, so you are the applicant. And there are three people who signed up to speak in protest. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Like you said, this is a name change from Hertz Quell Springs Parkway. The proposed is Bogart Parkway. And I think a little historical context is important here to understand what's happening. In two thousand and sixteen, Hertz decided to lay off five hundred and fifty people from its large operational center in, in Quell Springs Parkway. About two years later, Hertz decided to completely close this magnificent operational center. It's a really nice building. And the building set dormant, mothballed for a couple of years. And then one day, we got a call from And then one day, we got a call from Costco. And Costco decided to acquire this property. And not only that, they informed us that they were employing 1,500 people with good-paying jobs. That was about January of this year. And there's a picture, I can't remember, Mayor, whether you're in social media or on the Daily Oklahoma, but there's a picture of the mayor in front of the Costco sign announcing the coming of these 1,500 great jobs. Shortly thereafter, I got a call from the mayor. And the mayor suggested to me that he would like to see the name of this street changed from Hertz because Hertz is no longer there. And was kind enough to say, since it's near Ward, I'd like you to pick a name. And as a result of that, after doing some searching and thinking, I came up with the name Bogart Parkway. And the reason I did that was because Mr. Bogart had just recently passed away. I've known him since 1989. He was incredibly active in the state of Oklahoma and internationally, not only in the oil and gas industry, but more importantly, with helping kids at all levels. Especially noteworthy is John Marshall High School, Oklahoma State University, and Heritage Hall High School. Through his efforts, his son and his two grandsons for John Marshall and Heritage Hall have racked up nine state championships. And so with that, I called the mayor and told him I'd like to name it after recently deceased Dick Bogart, which he was agreeable. I think it's important to understand that if you look at when we do a name change, and these things happen all the time, I'll give you some examples. We, since I've been around, there's Flaming Lips Alley, there's Ben Skil Avenue, there's Charlie Christian Avenue, there's Reverend James C. Coates Drive, there's Mick Cornet Drive, First American Boulevard, and Kings of Leon Lane. And so when we do a name change, the one thing we try to look at is what kind of impact is this gonna have? And I know Councilperson Greenwell has brought this up in the past. If you're like driving down Ron Norick Road, and then it changes to Robinson Avenue, that can create confusion for drivers. And so one of the reasons that we were okay with this name change is that it's on a street that's less than a mile. It's really short, you can walk it in probably 15 minutes. Both ends, it dead-end, one at Northwest 150th, the other at Quell Springs Parkway. So you're not gonna have that problem of two different names on the same street. The other thing we looked at, it only impacts 15 businesses. There are not a lot of businesses over there at this time that it will impact. The one thing I would say is, when it went before the planning commission, and I don't know how this happened, but that day, J.J. Chambliss was not there when this was presented. And if I had to guess, no one knew that this was at the request of the mayor. And it was also because a business was no longer there. Hertz was gone. It wasn't just we were changing the name to be changing it, it's because circumstances have changed. And so we did receive some protests. Jeff Butler was kind enough to reach out and meet with the protesters. And we made an offer to them to kind of try to make this a good transition. And one thing that Jeff, and Jeff did a great job with this, by the way, he wanted to set an effective date out that would be out for 24 months. And one of the concerns that the protesters raised was the cost of having to change out their stationery. And so what we did was we went back and looked at it. And we found out that we could roll this out, the name change, for six months. And the postal service will allow us 18 months. In fact, I don't know if you can see this here, but the postal service, and I got some of these that I'm gonna give out to the protesters if this passes, because I am recommending approval of this. This is your official change of address kit that you can now do online. And it can serve you well for up to 18 months. And so I looked at this issue of, you know, is it gonna, is it gonna cause these 15 businesses to have a tremendous increase in postal service? And so I went and looked at what my business, we have, depending on the time of the month, we have between 50 and 55 employees. And I looked at what we spend on, we have high-bonded, high-quality stationery. I looked at what we spend on it. And we spend about $70 a month on that for a total of $840. And so, because that was a concern to me. And so what we proposed, what Jeff proposed, was that we rolled this out over time so it wouldn't be harmful to anyone having, they can use their stationery and then start anew. But I feel strongly that this is important in that Hertz is no longer there. It's important that Mr. Bogart, in his obituary, talks about how he engaged in these random acts of kindness, and they use the word quietly. Well, that's not the way Mr. Bogart did it. He did it anonymously. And I don't think he'd mind me telling this, but, you know, during the bombing, he spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars getting gloves, medical supplies, blankets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, down for all the fire people that were working down there. And that's just one of hundreds of examples of kind things that he did. I remember one time there was a person he read about in the paper, and their house had gotten on fire. And he was an acquaintance of that person. And he went to a department store and bought a gift certificate and had it delivered to the person so they could buy clothes, because all their clothes were gone. And so I think this is an appropriate name. I think it's an appropriate person for it. And I'll be moving for approval at this time. Mayor, I'd welcome to hear from the protesters, please.
Okay. And yes, I want to validate what you said. I mean, this all started because Hertz left. And I pointed out in the process of the Costco courtship that it was probably not appropriate to continue for the city to provide taxpayer-funded advertising to a non-local company that isn't even there anymore. And so that was what started this whole ball rolling. And I continue to maintain, I just don't think that naming a street after Hertz from this point forward is appropriate. And it probably is something we ought to consider in the future. If we ever name streets after private companies that may not be there forever, that we're gonna hand this kind of dilemma to our successors. But with that, we have Todd McInnis. Is Todd on the line?
Not on the line, okay. Jody Cole?
Just so you know, Mayor, I talked to Todd McInnis, and we had a very positive conversation, even though he's not here.
Okay.
Yes, Jody Cole on the line, yes, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead, Jody.
Sure, so I am an attorney and represent EOG Resources. And I appreciate both what Jeff and what Mark Stonecifer have done to try to reach a compromise with the businesses. And our main concern is just, we need a two-year rollout. Give us some time to implement the address change. I know there's other businesses who are protesting the address change in its entirety, but EOG's main concern is that we do have the two-year rollout period. And with that, I will pass it on to the next protester.
Okay. Sam Jurens?
Mayor?
Yes.
I was having a difficult time hearing the last speaker. I couldn't quite hear, it was kind of going.
I think she said, if I may summarize, that she's looking for a two-year implementation period. And that was basically it.
Yeah, and just so everybody's clear on the two-year implementation, James, what that means is the sign will go up in six months. We will assist anyone that wants to engage in the official change of address through the address kit or online. And the post office has told us it's approximately 18 months. So six plus 18 is 24 months, that's two years.
And Councilman, this is Jeff Butler, Planning Director. If I might make a quick clarification, they actually, the post office informed me that they don't actually need to apply, so that that 18 months is automatic. So that'll make it.
That's even better news, thank you.
Okay, so Sam Jurens?
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Sam Jurens. I currently office at 14620 Hertz Quell Springs Parkway. I also own five addresses affected by this proposal. You know, I submitted my arguments last week, and I know other arguments were received, so I'll try to be a little bit more brief. You know, one of the buildings, I used to own six. One of the buildings I actually sold to Colorado Business that, you know, expanded here during the pandemic, unfortunately enough, has been adding jobs. They've also purchased substantial marketing material, but they're even messaging me now saying, you know, it's not only that, it's the confusion of all the marketing materials they sent out for new business. Now those clients that have received that information are not gonna know how to contact them and be confused with a new address. You know, in the beginning, I spoke to all the businesses affected, especially the small ones, that I did not find to be in support of this. You know, the recommending council unanimously voted against it because they heard all of our arguments of how cumbersome this change is on us. You know, I currently, and I hope to always be fortunate enough to continue to be involved with the city projects. So I really wanted to avoid disclosing conflicts of interest that I believe are in this proposal. Many businesses pointed it out to me, and they're frustrated with the conflict. And I felt obligated to make mention of it, which is in my arguments, if you're unaware of what that is. I asked that you please listen to these property owners affected and instead allow Mr. Bogart to be honored in countless other ways that do not adversely affect us. You know, the Eighth Ward is full of new development, that numerous other roads being paved that could instead honor Mr. Bogart. You know, why does it need to be this street specifically? You know, Councilman Stonecifer made mention to Hertz leaving the building abandoned. Hertz was a travel-related company that filed for bankruptcy during probably, I hope, the most severe economic recession I get to see in my career. And that was the reason for that. And the 12th hour Costco came in and purchased that, which all of us owners here on the Parkway are extremely grateful for, because we know that continues to keep this a good, strong area. You know, it was a privilege this morning getting to hear other honors being given out to individuals in the public hearings. But if you note on all those resolutions, there's no collateral damage to that. You know, Mr. Bogart, even his family as well, are undoubtedly deserving of this honor. And I don't think there's a single business owner on this Parkway that believes they are not. I, you know, they continue to be actively involved in this area as well, including the great city. You know, I have the opportunity of knowing Brett Bogart, which is one of the grandsons, and I would consider him a friend. I'm also a frequent patron of another grandson, Brian, his establishments. And I have been a patron for well over a decade, since my days at OU. I respectfully ask both of their grandsons as fellow business owners to look at the unnecessary costs and administration issues being burdened on us property owners in honor of their grandfather. You know, apologize to any other family members that I'm not mentioning. These are just the two that I'm personally familiar with. You know, additionally, as business operators, we don't have time to continue to devote to fighting an arbitrary street name change. You know, please do not continue to defer this. You know, you guys allowed Hertz to be on the Parkway in the first place. When we bought the properties, that's the name that was on the street. We understood that. We bear the Hertz name. I, you know, I'm not sure why that would be a burden on the city as much as us who have that in our address. You know, I just want to say thank you to all of you on the council for your time, everything you guys do for the city, as well as my gratitude to Mr. Bogart and his family for all past, present, future contributions. I hope to continue to personally be investing alongside the Bogart family as well, as well as all the other affected businesses on this Parkway from this change. And I kindly request your consideration from the other property owners that bear the proposal's unnecessary burden. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stonecifer.
Mr. Jurens, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. But in this instance, and under these facts, and under these circumstances, I'm gonna move for the approval of the name change. Thank you.
I just, I had a couple of questions myself as we look at this. Just, one, is it possible to maybe send this back to the planning commission for them to look at it further? And the only reason I'm asking is it's quite interesting how we are the applicant for this, and our planning commission decided to deny it. Especially with the fact that we have city staff that could have spoken to this particular ask and request, and we are here as far as the denial is concerned. So that's just my ask in looking at this, in order for us to really do this, in my opinion, the best way. Because I look forward to the day, right now, as I heard you speak, Councilperson Stonecifer, about how we have streets that turn into one thing. Keep in mind, I have a community on Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue that turns into Eastern that are still waiting for that whole street to be named after Martin Luther King Jr. And the fact that I'm hoping that even our city will push that effort forward. This is what we're going to be doing for street names, especially going through this and the impact of what that could be for the other folks in other places. So that's just my ask, if it's possible for us to send it back to planning commission and do it the right way. Otherwise, I will be asking for us to do the same thing for a street that has been disadvantaged as far as being able to, in my opinion, see the inequities of why you see the area named in a certain place and not in others, instead of making it consistent all the way in our city.
I think the only thing I'd say, and this is with all due respect, that the staff recommended approval of this. The day it was heard, it's my belief that no one knew why we were doing this. And just like we approved all those other named streets, it would have been approved. And so I'm just asking that it move forward. I don't think it needs to go back to the planning commission in light of the fact that city staff recommended its approval.
Well, I will say this, it's very hard for me to support something, especially to this magnitude, if especially our city staff and our planning commission had a disconnect in this conversation. That's really difficult, especially with something like this, for us to not have that cohesiveness in these types of decisions. That's just my personal opinion in this. Because again, we're gonna be looking at this again, we're gonna continue to look at this. I've already had two streets in the Bricktown Downtown area that we renamed. So I know this is gonna happen again. And I really would like for us to look at the process of it. And I agree with the gentleman that spoke last, kudos. And I am thankful for Mr. Bogart and the things that he's been able to do to serve our city silently and publicly. But I think as we look at this, I just ask us to be very careful in the manner that we move with this type of process. And I humbly and respectfully ask that we send this back to the planning commission so they can unanimously say yes to this, instead of having a miscommunication where someone from our city staff is not there and cannot say what the importance of this is for even our planning commission to understand.
Yeah, we're gonna be visiting this again. And fortunately, now I have lots of materials I can give you on it.
So I don't need the materials, because I've read it, so I get it. And clearly, if this was presented to planning commission, our city should have been able to get it to them where they got it too, and they didn't. So that's what I'm saying, that that's gonna be an issue for me.
And I think just to follow up sort of on that, those questions, because that's where I'm having trouble understanding the disconnect of every single present planning commissioner voting to deny it versus like deferring it so they could learn more. And like, did they not have the information about the post office? Like, what information was not provided to them that they were asking for to help better inform, I guess, their decision? Because even my understanding is the Ward 8 planning commissioner voted to deny. So I just, if he didn't even know what was going on here, I just, I'm trying to understand that disconnect. what was going on here, I just, I'm trying to understand that disconnect. And I know that we put a lot of respect on our volunteer boards and commissions, rightly so, the ti- especially planning commission, they don't dedicate years and hours a, and do not get paid for this position. And so, you know, if, if we're going to be doing this with other boards and commissions and really making sure we're honoring what, what they're recommending, I just, I, I'm just having a hard time understanding the disconnect in what information they were asking for that was not provided for them.
Yeah, if I might answer that question, Jeff Butler, again, planning director, uh, the, the planning commission, I think the major difference between what they heard and what you all heard this morning was, uh, uh, you know, they, they, they did not hear the full backstory about the, the rationale behind this name change. Um, the other thing that they were, did not hear, because we didn't have the information at the time, was how this process worked, uh, how much time the business owners uh, would have to, to, to make this change over. So I, I think that there, there were, the protestors, uh, did a good job and were very articulate in uh, kind of giving them their perspective and how they were concerned, as you heard today, uh, about the switching costs, um, of this, um. But there wasn't any talk at the, at the meeting about, um, the timing, uh, any kind of phasing, that, that, a- any kind of timeline that they might have or time period that they might have to make those adjustments. Um, so that, that I think is, that is the major difference, um, between planning commission and now we were able to do some more homework, talk to the post office. And as was mentioned earlier, propose that, well, hey, we don't, we don't need to make the ordinance effective immediately. We can make it effective, you know, several months hence. And we were able to contact the post office and find out about their, their, uh, eighteen month policy. So that, uh, that was, that was a big difference and, and why you are hearing different information or more information, I should say, than the planning commission heard.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think my, one other question is given the denial by planning commission, if we were to approve this, are we setting ourselves up for any like potential legal action if, uh, if, if someone did take legal action, are we more uh, vulnerable because we are sort of disagreeing with the recommendation by planning commission? I just want to make sure that kind of, I mean, I, to Councilwoman Nice's point, I think, making sure we're doing this the right way so that things like this don't, um, hinder additional, you know, efforts in the future. And, and just making sure we're just having all of our ducks in a row, I think is important in my mind, so.
Yeah, I, I think the important thing there is, is for Kenny to answer something like that. And what comes to mind is, you know, on, on James Griner's last day, uh, we all voted with him, uh, and despite the fact that the planning commission voted another way. And so in my experience since 2015, there have been several times that we just chose to disagree with the planning commission uh, based upon additional evidence. And I think we've made a great record of the additional evidence that sadly wasn't, wasn't presented to planning, but it's, there's not necessary to go back to planning. In my mind, it's just make your record, but put on a good record and put your facts into the evidence if you need it. And Kenny, you're better to answer that or Amanda than, than I am. But, but in my mind, we have, we have differences with planning commission. Uh, not all the time, but it, it happens on occasion.
Yes, that's all correct. And really, there's not any legal financial exposure on this. So in the remote case that someone would fund a lawyer to file a legal challenge against it, it's actually the staff report is more important than the planning commission's recommendation. So.
And, and Kenny, also, name changes are, I would not think are really actionable because it's not your property, it's our property.
Probably not.
I mean, that's different than a zoning case.
Of course, anybody, anybody can, yeah.
Yeah, anybody can sue on anything. I get that. But I mean, there's not a, not a real action there.
No, we probably get it dismissed.
I appreciate the information.
And it might not add, I think that's what makes this worse because it's our property and we couldn't even tell our own story to, to get it through to the planning commission. But a- again, I just, I would rather we did it, especially with it being our own property, we did it, uh, the right way. And to me, that, that would be sending it back to planning commission.
Nick, you're a friend. We just differ on this one. Uh, I, I think we've established a good enough record and I'm going to move it to go forward, move for its approval.
Before we do that, may I ask a question about the process? To help me, because I mean, it's, it's Ward Eight, so ultimately I'm inclined to support that direction, but I'm hearing what the two councilwomen are voicing. And so just to, and maybe Kenny might be, or Jeff, the helpful one here. So that Martin Luther King example, that's a good one. And I'm, I'm very aware of that street because I drive thirty-six MLK and take that all the way out to UCO to teach the few days I had junked out there. And I've always wondered, why isn't the street, why doesn't it just continue? And then same to the, the south, right? Um, what will that process look like? And becau- especially because of the precedent this vote was set, like if this council says, sure. And, and goes against a, um, goes against the planning commission for the reasons that we've all heard. Um, we heard what staff has said, um, and, and recommending it. But what will the process look like? And I'm just using MLK as an example, because I, I want to make sure that whatever vote I cast here, um, I'm kind of setting myself up for, you know, a little bit of consistency down the road, uh, when Councilwoman Nice, um, wants to, uh, you know, have this council a, address, you know, I believe one of the greatest civil rights leaders on planet earth. Um, people love to quote him at least. Um, so yeah, what will that process look like? Help me understand.
I, I think, I think Kenny's probably best to answer that. But in the end, we have the right, we have the authority, we have the power, um, to disagree with our planning commission, especially when new evidence has been presented to us. And in this case, there's been new evidence presented to us. Uh, uh, thankfully Jeff did a great job at, uh, meeting with people and getting us this new evidence. And so Kenny, you want to talk about procedure?
Yes, essentially you can use the same procedure you used here. I mean, a council member can ask for it to be initiated and referred to the planning commission or a planning commissioner your Ward Se- uh, Ward Two Planning Commissioner or the Ward Seven Planning Commissioner could put it on the planning commission agenda for initiation. And it, it just goes through the same process of being reviewed by the planning commission and then it would come to council for adoption.
And, and let, please answer this because this is interesting to me because I understand the MLK coalition is working to petition signatures in order for this to take place. So therefore, um, if I move this forward, we, we don't have to do the signatures. We can just move to just continue the whole street.
It just depends on, uh, how much, uh, evidence of support for it that you want to have. If you want to have a whole bunch of evidence for support, just go ahead and do it through the petition drive. And they would probably just bring it to the city and it, it's not really an initiative petition type thing. It's that they're just petitioning that the city initiate this and do this. So then you would have, you'd have a record of how many people along that street want, want it to be done. So I mean, you could do that if, that they're already doing it, but you don't have to. I mean, you could initiate it next, next council meeting.
I'll just initiate it at the end of this one. Thank you.
The petition is not mandatory. The petition is just for evidence of support.
Right.
Well, a- again, it's perception versus reality. And unfortunately, some, someone has probably given this group, uh, the wrong perception that they would have to get all of these signatures instead of us being able to send it to planning commission and just have it done. So those are again inequities and these are the concerns we have when we're looking at these types of particular situations pertaining to who the name is, especially who the name is and where the names of these streets are actually going to be located.
Well, and I, I know we're about to vote. I, the reason why I brought up the example I did is, and I just had to Google this and I, I couldn't remember the place, but it was Kansas City. Um, very recently, um, there was a, I'm just reading, a historic ten mile road in Kansas City, Missouri will no longer be known as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard after having nearly one hundred signs erected with his name and for only nine months. The proposal to remove the celebrated civil rights leader's name received overwhelming support from voters with seventy percent casting ballots to stay in favor of restoring the Boulevard back to its original name, coincidentally, the Paseo, um, according to the, the results from the Kansas City Star. So I'm just saying like the, I just want to make sure that we're aware of, um, I want to try and be as consistent as possible with what we do here today. That if what Councilwoman Nice is talking about, and it could not just be there, there could be in Councilman Stone's word. Any Carter, Young, you name them, there, there are people who have contributed to um, the very foundations of our city, of every ethnicity, religion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so I just want to make sure that like we are prepared as council members that if this body, because what I'm imagining is maybe someone protests an MLK name change at planning commission. And it's enough to, um, because of this moment we're in, um, to sway. And we don't know, it's all hypothetical, but if that gets rec- if that becomes a no vote on ca- on planning commission comes to us, I worry we might find ourselves in a situation where we go, well, you know, planning said not to do it. App recommended, but, so that's what I'm preparing us for. And, and that's what I'm, because when I'm hearing this conversation take place, it brought back that particular news story I just read to you. That's the worry I have here. So I just, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, Mark, that. And do you hear what I'm saying also?
I hear what you're saying. And the, the only thing I'd say to that is, um, and, and I said it a minute ago, uh, we have the power, the right, the authority to vote on this. And if, if, if every time the planning commission voted differently than what i- i- if, if they voted differently than what we want to do, then we don't need to vote. Just let the planning commission decide all this. That's, that, that's why we have the authority to correct things, uh, when mistakes are made. And that's, that's, that's a fundamental right I never want to delegate to the planning commission. That's what I was voted into office to do, is to oversee this city. And in this instance, we didn't get all the evidence in, but it's in now.
And that's why I respectfully disagree with you, Councilperson Stone Cypher, because we, as the city, are the applicant. I can understand if it was an outside entity applying for this and we're going through this process because I've had um, a, a case, a zoning case in my ward where I have denied the approval of the planning commission. So I'm, I, I admit I'm one of those. But we are the applicant as the city. So in my opinion, we should also be an example of what we would like to see as a city pertaining to these types of name changes and the things that we would like to see. Because this is going to happen again. I guarantee you this, it's going to happen again. And I would, I would be remiss by, as a councilperson, yes, elected to do this to also ensure when we took that oath that we're doing right by our communities and our city as well. And right now I would really like to see us do right by this process. And to me, if that means taking that extra step, just to ensure that we are gaining the trust of our community and our city by doing this process for the, our city as the applicant, I would hope that we could do that. We haven't had this problem in, in any, any other name change, most recently as a city applicant. We haven't had it. So I, that's the only reason I find grave difficulty with us proceeding in the manner that we are for this particular situation in zoning requests today. As far as name change, excuse me, not zoning requests, but name change today.
Yeah, sad we disagree, but i- i- in my mind, legally, we got the process right. We did the right thing. And so I'm going to move for approval.
Can I ask a question real quick? With everything that's been going on, I'm kind of forgotten, why did this even become a question as to change the name?
Because it's n- currently named after a national company with no Oklahoma ties that is no longer located on that street.
Hertz went out of business.
That, that, that's the reason. Wh- whether you view that as valid or not is up, up to your discretion, but that, that was the reason. Probably should have never been na- whenever that was done thirty, forty years ago, probably shouldn't have been named after a company. But maybe it was the only, maybe it was the only landowner on the street at the time, who knows? But keep that in mind next time. I'm not saying we have any plans to, but next time somebody comes along and wants to name a street after a private company, we ought to remember this moment. But that was the reason.
And then I just. May I make the motion at this time, please?
Yes, yes.
Say real quick, sorry, just, I want to make sure anyone listening knows where I stand on this. Like, yeah, I mean, I agree, we shouldn't name it after corporations, because you know, my personal philosophy, um, and eyes tell me corporations aren't people. Um, and now we see some of the problem with that, um, in this instance. So yeah, I get it and I understand why we're doing it. Um, I would just hope that this process plays out a bit differently going forward. That's my, that's my, my ask.
I agree with that.
All right, so we have a motion. And a second. Pass the votes. Passes eight to one.
Mayor.
Uh, yes.
Mayor. This is David Greenwell.
Yes, sir.
I hate to belabor the point, but I do want to make a quick clarification. The example that Councilman Stone Cypher gave in terms of Robinson Avenue, uh, the change I mentioned was from Robinson to Thunder Avenue, not Mayor Norrie. I, I think Mayor Norrie deserves all credit.
I, I did say that wrong.
Fair, fair enough. The rec- the record will soon know.
Not trying to make a big point, but I do respect all the work that Mayor Norrie did and, and, uh, uh, to lead us out of the troubled areas. And that gentleman that spoke earlier saying that he hopes this was the worst recession he ever sees. He hasn't seen anything like we experienced back in the nineteen eighties around here. Now granted, nationally, this was more severe, but certainly locally, uh, what we went through in the eighties and into the early nineties was something else. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have to step away, so I'm turning the chair over to Vice Mayor Nice, starting with item nine K.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have item nine K. It's ordinance on final hearing, recommended for denial. Uh, and this is a special permit to allow a use unit mining and processing minerals and raw materials in the I two moderate industrial district in AE two airport environments zone two overlay district. And this is in Ward Three, Councilwoman Yon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, is the applicant on the line?
Yes, uh, this is Blaine Nice, one hundred North Broadway, uh, Oklahoma City for the applicant. I submitted a letter last week, um, asking that this matter be postponed indefinitely. This matter was set a month ago and at the request of city staff. Like we're having the news swaying in and this matter had a lot of issues. And so we agreed to postpone it. In the meantime, I talked to my client. I know there's some people that still may want to speak today, but I just asked it to be postponed indefinitely. I can assure you, this is not meant to, uh, for any nefarious purpose. It's not going to be brought back in this form if it's brought back at all, which is highly unlikely. I just need time. I, my, uh, client, there's two principals. I've only been able to speak to one of them at length about it. Uh, it may be withdrawn, but it's, it's my recommendation to them that we postpone it indefinitely. Uh, there are some other issues working with that. Some people that are residents of the, the Williamson Farms that we may have some other plans for the property. So right now, we're just trying to call a timeout and, and I would respectfully ask that it be postponed indefinitely.
Mr. Nice, thank you for your comments. I, I think that the concern of the, the residents is that the indefinitely um, is, is pretty unusual for a special use permit, uh, in particular, because that special use permit is, is for one cause of action, if you will. And so, um, I have some concerns about that myself. But before I go on, um, do we have, uh, someone in representing Williamson Farms on the line?
Mayor Young, may I interrupt real briefly, very briefly, um, Mr. Nice is a coworker of mine, so, uh, Vice Mayor. Mayor Young, may I interrupt real briefly, very briefly? Um, Mr. Nice is a coworker of mine. So Vice Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one. Uh, and I'll come back in after the vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
We're in, and I, I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilmember. Um, I mean, we can set a specific date for uh, down if that would make you more comfortable, because I do know postponing indefinitely sends a message. I just want to be sure my clients are informed and um, um, we've got another issue that's been proposed to me by one of the residents over at Williamson Farms, and I need to talk to them about that. So.
Well, let me give the opportunity for anybody else on the line to speak before we, we make a motion, Mr. Nice, and then we'll, we'll talk about what we can do next.
Okay, thank you.
Am I live now? Oh, there I am. Okay.
Hi, please introduce yourself and give your address.
Sure. My name is Sean Abananto. Um, I'm the pastor of the Oaks Church here on the south side of Oklahoma City. My address is one, two, nine, one, three, Preakness Road. Just a few hundred feet from where this proposed mine site would be. And the reason why the neighborhood had asked me to speak today, as well as I did in the Planning Commission, is prior to moving into ministry, um, all my years as an entrepreneur, I was a partner in a mining operation for several years. So my expertise in what the permit is trying to uh, do and create uh, really speaks to the real truth behind the matter. Uh, one, there's zero need to put this off any further. Um, they've had months and months to discuss different options. And uh, for them to say they need more time, they haven't had time to get together, that says to me, they must not take it very seriously. You know, as not as seriously as this community does. You know, we have a very diverse community that we love very much. We spend a lot of time outdoors in this community. We have uh, over seven hundred homes in this community. But let me speak to my mining experience. Uh, the applicant says that on page two of the staff report from the Planning Commission, it says that they will use construction equipment, crushers, screens, conveyor belts, sand processing equipment, dredging and pumping equipment, et cetera. For their sand, gravel and clay mining operation. This is the same equipment that my operation used out in Utah. And it is noisy and it is dirty and it is messy. There's no way to mitigate that. There's no way to change that. It is what it is. And the level of noise and dust that this will create, especially the dust, I mean, that's the one thing I really want to focus on because as we know in Oklahoma, we are a very windy city here in Oklahoma City Metro. As a former firefighter back when we studied this, uh, you know, at that point in time, Oklahoma City was the second windiest city in the nation. I think now we currently come in about fifth or sixth. And it is primarily out of the south. Blowing north, which we are directly north of where this proposed mine site would be. So the level of dust that this entire neighborhood would have to contend with uh, would be pretty bad. And if you look through this staffing reports, I know you guys have done, and we really appreciate you taking the time to go through the detail. Is that the dust is mentioned multiple times, multiple times. And really the big thing I want to point to on page eleven. And that's item number three. It says the operator shall develop a dust management plan to be approved by airport authority staff. And I had to giggle at this when I first read it because if you're having to come up with a dust management plan that has to be approved by the airport authority, then what you're saying is dust has the potential to go so high in the air due to this operation that it could literally impact flight path. Well, if we have to try to come up with a plan that would mitigate that, I'm here to tell you, there's no way to come up with anything that will mitigate dust at the ground level. Now, they talked about watering. What I love about their idea about watering is it says on page two that they would water if necessary and as determined by the applicant. Well, I know that in my mining operation out in Utah, we were eight miles from the nearest town. And that town also was downwind. And we had to water on a consistent basis to keep the dust from eight miles away. And we've all seen, we've all seen what happens in Oklahoma when, you know, the dirt gets stirred up and the wind and it carries for miles and miles. Like I said, we were eight miles away and we had to water. So I'm just here to tell you, this is a bad idea. It would severely impact this community and our quality of life. And with that, I uh, yield my time for the rest of the speakers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Abanato.
And Councilwoman, I, I do understand we have at least three more speakers, Dr. Samantha Collins.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I am uh, at forty-seven hundred Southwest one twenty-seventh Street. Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven, three, one, seven, three. My name is Dr. Samantha Collins. I work at the OU Children's Hospital. I'm also representing my husband. Dr. Benjamin Collins, who is a head and neck surgeon in the area. Um, as previously discussed, surface mining creates dust, comes from multiple areas such as the drilling, the loaders, the haul tucks and the stop piles of the soil. Different human effects of the dust are related mainly to the size of the dust particles and the wind pattern. The distance from the mine to our neighborhood isn't very far and could easily reach us on a normal Oklahoma day. So these larger dust particles, they will, when inhaled, they will stay in the area of the head. They would irritate the nose, the throat and the eyes. This would cause issues such as asthma, COPD, allergies, and just an overall reduced lung function. The smaller dust particles are actually inhaled into the lungs. They go into the deeper area called the aviola region. And um, at this point, they could enter the bloodstream. Your lungs are basically like a closed system. The body can't get rid of these particles. And therefore it's causing a constant irritation which can lead to scar tissue and fibrosis. Furthermore, topsoil naturally just has organisms such as pollen, bacteria, viruses and fungi. When the dust carrying these organisms enter into the body, they can cause a host of infections. You can get things like bacterial infections like E. coli or fungi infections like coccytomycosis. Uh, last year they had a hundred and fifty thousand cases of community acquired pneumonia from this fungi. There are also others like histoplasmosis and Asperdellis that can be life threatening in the elderly children. Those with a compromised immune systems. And this is from a publication from the Journal of the American Board of Family Medicine in two thousand twelve. Soil also has elements such as heavy metals and pollution. The Oklahoma State University published an article in two thousand eighteen regarding the metals found in Oklahoma soil. They found these levels and elements to include arsenic, cadmium, copper, molybium, sen, lead and selenium. These are issues because these metals bio-chemilate. They keep building up in your body and there's basically no way to break these substances down. Children should not be absorbing or inhaling heavy metals. There shouldn't be quote unquote a safe limit. And children are far more susceptible to these pollutants and heavy metals, and they can build up and cause issues such as neurological problems to cancer. Three minutes is not a lot of time to really discuss all of the issues I addressed. If nothing else, I feel like fundamentally, people know that strip mining should not be next to a neighborhood, especially a neighborhood filled with children. The reason why we moved to this area is because we fell in love with the community and we want to raise our family here. I believe that K and M should have a place to mine, but that place should not but be next to Williamson Farms. For these reasons, the more I ask you to help us protect the safety and welfare of Oklahomans and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins.
And I believe up next we have, let's see, I have names here. Miss Amy, I know you.
Gillian, Gillian Sully.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning or I guess afternoon now. Thank you. Um, good morning and to all the councilmembers. My name is Gillian Sully and I live with my family at five thousand Southwest one hundred and thirtieth Street. Our property line is adjacent to the K and M property being discussed today. I have been an emergency manager for almost twenty years. And in my career, I have seen what happens when proper mitigation is not implemented or when prevention was not made a priority. This spot zoning permit request would allow K and M to mine on a thirty acre field adjacent to a thriving Oklahoma City neighborhood for the next almost three decades. In fact, the plans propose for two mining areas. Or to paint a better picture, if you look at the map that was up a moment ago, two up to sixty foot deep holes that straddle a twelve inch high pressure gas line within feet of homes. Within feet of families. The city's zoning website states that zoning is necessary to protect community health, safety and welfare. We agree. City Council rightly sets its first priority to promote safe, secure and thriving neighborhoods. And states in the Oklahoma City Plan that residents expect safe neighborhoods that provide a high quality of life. We agree with that too. This proposed project is a life safety threat. We have submitted numerous materials to support this. To recap, here's a very short list of a few major safety concerns that we see in K and M's application. First, easy access to the site. Next, dangerous excitement that heavy equipment and a deep hole to explore could attract. The potential impact to the twelve inch high pressure gas line that according to regulation is considered a high consequence area. Physically moving yet another operator's gas pipeline in that area during operations. The overhead power lines displaced wildlife moving into the neighborhood. Air pollution from dust causing not only the health concerns already mentioned, but a safety concern to the airport as mentioned, and requiring a twenty-four, seven point of contact for the airport. Later remediation plans to create a retention pond, thus attracting additional wildlife and birds and thus becoming yet another hazard to incoming and outgoing flights. And future plans to potentially use this location as a landfill. The list goes on and on. If developed for this purpose, the site has no future potential land use, but continues to be a hazard to the community and to the city. We agree with the Planning Commission that this spot zoning special permit is a perfect example of incompatible land use zoning. If developed, this creates a preventable life safety threat to the residents of Williamson Farms. On behalf of the more, more than seven hundred families in our neighborhood and the evidence that we have provided, we thank you in advance for your support of the Oklahoma City Plan and for upholding your priority of safety first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sully.
Uh, up next, I believe we have Christopher Skelton.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you for your time and uh, Mr. Nice, uh, we want to thank you as well. I guess, I guess we're a little confused here because um, the indefinite suspension just kind of, it, it doesn't kill this, but it just kind of puts it out there and it's still lingering. And that's what we're a little confused about. But I guess I, I'm here today to talk about the financials. Um, you know, this is southwest Oklahoma City, but it's actually the single largest gated community in the state of Oklahoma. You know, we've got over seven hundred and thirty homes. Um, if you take the estimated value of those seven hundred and fifty homes, you're looking at over three hundred million dollars. And um, in our zip code, seven, three, one, seven, three, the average average price per home is in excess of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so just for a quick calculation for you all. You know, if you take seven hundred and fifty homes at an average price of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and say this mining operation worked to go in to affect, um, it would say it reduces the pro- property values by ten percent. That would be an essential loss in equity to our homeowners of eighteen million dollars. And if you look at the mining operation, it's literally going to be uh, generating roughly, you know, three to five million dollars over, over its lifespan, I believe. And actually, our estimates actually show that the reduction will be in excess of fifteen percent. Um, and, and it's really important for you guys to understand. So um, I've got an engineering background, got a legal background, got a real estate license, do a lot of things. In review of the Oklahoma Real Estate Commission's uh, required form that's for every real property, uh, residential property disclosure. If you take a look at um, the environmental section of that, uh, question number thirty-two, it asks about any known um, nuisances. And obviously if a mine were there, when our residents would go to sell their property, they would have to disclose the nuisance of a, a strip mine that's adjacent to it. And that would just kill property prices. And that's, that's where you get this, you know, ten, fifteen percent uh, reduction in property value. So, you know, with that, I'm going to leave you uh, just kind of that, you know, on the four, four points we spoke today. We don't, we think there's an incapality, incompatibility issue. We think there's a health issue. We think there's a safety issue. And we think it's going to cause excessive financial harm to the communities in and around that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skelton.
And lastly, we have Matt Echols.
Hello, can I be heard here?
You can.
Alright, hello. Uh, I'm at uh, one, two, five, zero, five Lexington Drive. I am here to speak on behalf of South Lakes Soccer Complex or Soccer Club. Uh, and I'm just, I just briefly want to point out that the soccer uh, club is situated directly east of the Williamson Farms neighborhood. Uh, this is just a few hundred yards away from this proposed mine site. The dust that uh, Mr. Abanado addressed earlier uh, will obviously, if it can get to airplanes, will cover the soccer fields. It will also cover the adjacent park next to it. We have hundreds of children there on a nightly basis, if not upwards of thousands of children and families there on a daily nightly basis. Uh, the weekends can get into five, six, seven, eight thousand people. Uh, the, as the physician earlier pointed out, uh, this is something that these people cannot breathe in. Uh, just a little bit of research from any one of us that we can all do, uh, will, will show you that these, this dust leads to respiratory disease, lung cancer. These are not something that we can sit next to a park and, and ask children to come participate in activities that we should all be able to go do within any one of our communities, wherever we may live. Knowing that, know, knowing full well that there's something else in the community that could potentially harm, harm the participants uh, or in the long term. So with that in mind, we would just like to voice our objection to uh, to SPs uh, to, to the item number here. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Echols. Vice Mayor, is, is that everybody?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blaine, I, I'm going to make this, I'm sorry.
If I might, Councilmember, I appreciate it. And I know you're going to make a motion. I, I feel like I made a, a request to be postponed and then I never presented anything and everybody presented the other side. But I'm not naive to where this is going, so I'm not going to belabor it. I just want to make a couple of points. First of all, this area was all industrial. The city allowed the residential to come to it. It's our, it's zoned agriculture. It's not a zoning change. It's just a special permit. There's already plowing in the dirt um, being stirred up and everything. So that's going to continue as the use. It's being used agriculturally now. But I understand all the other comments and I understand your position. I, and we agreed to continue this today. I'm not trying to belabor it, but I'm, I'm comfortable that that the council's probably not inclined to continue it, that you're going to vote. I'm not naive. So that's kind of my two cents at this point.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Nice. And, and you're correct. We, we are going to go ahead and take a vote on this today. I, I would like to say, um, that it is my hope that the residents of Williamson Farms will continue to work with the property owner and any other property owners adjacent to the Williamson Farms area, that development is, is coming. And, and we need to find something that works for everybody within the zoning requirements that are there. Because it is an airport environment overlay, we, we have significant limitations. And I think that it will be highly unlikely that residential development be part of that conversation in the future. So I'm, again, I, I hope that those conversations continue and that we find good economic development for that area that works for everyone. So with having heard everyone today, thank you very much for your time, I make a motion to, uh, reject.
Okay, we have a motion. In a second, please cast your votes. Councilman Stone, say for.
He is absent.
He's absent. Councilman Cooper. Uh, don't see him either, so we will count him as absent as well. All right, uh, motion passes unanimously, so we'll move forward. All right, up next, we have item nine L, it's an ordinance on final hearing relating to nuisances, amending Article Six of Chapter Thirty-five of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code. And I will entertain a motion for this. We have a motion and looking for a second. Thank you. Please cast your votes. Right, passes unanimously. And our next item is item nine M, and this is the third of three meetings, a real estate sales agreement with No Boundaries International Incorporated for the sale of certain property known as Old Fire Station Number Sixteen, and we'll entertain a motion for this.
Vice Mayor, if I could, uh, before I make a movement on this, the, uh, I just wanted to reiterate again the great work that's done by No Boundaries International in this neighborhood on South Robinson. And when you think about, uh, this old fire station that was constructed back in nineteen fifty-one, which doesn't sound that long ago to me, but to you, some of you, it probably sounds like forever ago. If you think about this old building and the great work that it's, that it's held uh, since its inception, I just, I think it's incredible that as a fire station, what it did for our community, and now as a new home for No Boundaries International, and the services they provide, uh, in this neighborhood is just fantastic. So with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Thank you, I think we're all excited to see the possibilities of this building. So we have a motion in a second, please cast your ballot and your vote. It passes unanimously. Item nine N one, it's a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to speak for item nine N one?
No, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, so we will move with nine N two, resolution declaring structures are dilapidated. Uh, we will take a motion for that to be adopted. Have a motion in a second, please vote. Passes unanimously. And we will move to nine O one, that's a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Has anyone signed up to speak for this public hearing?
Uh, yes, let me see if he's on. Yes, but he's still wanting to speak. Uh, Kevin Hager.
Okay, sir, please, if you can hear us, please say your name and your address. And we have.
This is Kevin Hager, one, five, six, three, zero, North Fifty-Eighth West Avenue in Skytuck, Oklahoma.
Thank you. Kevin, you do know that your item was struck, correct?
Yes, uh, and I, uh, I just, uh, want to appreciate the council for the work that they've already done. But it's, it's a, it's a tough building. And we're in the process of trying to purchase the building, it closes on the nineteenth. And we want to work with the city to, uh, renovate the building and get it secured and, uh, and make it a, a pleasant and, uh, good, good place for a, a commercial business. And we look forward to working with the city to make this happen.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, are there any others that signed up to speak?
No, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to nine O two, it's a resolution declaring structures are unsecured, except for those that we were able to strike at the beginning of the meeting. We'll take a motion in a second, please. Thank you, and please vote. Passes unanimously. And that takes us to nine P one, that's public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Um, except for those that have been stricken from the beginning of the meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
And no, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, so we will move to nine P two, a resolution declaring buildings are abandoned. We'll take a, a motion to adopt this. Thank you, in a second, please cast your vote. Passes unanimously. And that takes us now to nine Q one, a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Andrea Yoder while she continues to rehabilitate. And this should be until May eleven, twenty twenty-two, whichever should occur first. So, and or, um, item Q one two, enter into executive session, so. Uh, I'm not sure, I think we should move to approve the resolution unless anyone has a reason to move into executive session. Hearing none, uh, we will ask that we move to approve nine Q one, the resolution approving the request. Thank you, we have a motion in a second, please cast your vote. Passes unanimously. And that takes us now to nine R one, that's a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Sakaro Bristol versus the City of Oklahoma City. Or enter into executive session. If there is a reason to enter in, into executive session, hearing none, I will ask that we approve the resolution to authorize.
Yes, no, we do not need executive session.
Thank you very much. Thank you, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine S one, this is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Larry Fugit and Joy Fugit individually as husband and wife, uh, with minor children versus City of Oklahoma City. Uh, or as nine S two, enter into executive session. I believe there is no need for executive session, unless anyone would like to entertain that motion. Hearing none, I will ask that we approve the resolution, uh, for nine S one to authorize our municipal counselor. And we have a motion in a second, and cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Moving to nine T one, this is a joint resolution with the city, with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority approving a settlement in the amount of six thousand dollars. And this is, uh, an opportunity for us to also enter into executive session, but I do understand there is no need to do that unless anyone wants to entertain that motion. Hearing none, I will ask that we approve the joint resolution with Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, nine T one. It has been moved in second, please place your vote. Passes unanimously. And nine U, uh, we do have a request to enter into executive session on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications from our attorneys regarding pending litigation in the case of Nicholas Martin versus the City of Oklahoma City. Uh, so thank you, we will move into executive session, would love to entertain the motion for that. Moved in second, please cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Ten A one is claims recommended for approval, uh, unless we move into, into executive session for that. Uh, hearing none, I will ask that we recommend approval for ten A one. It has been properly moved in second, please cast your vote. Passes unanimously. We will move on to item eleven. Items from council, so we will start at the top of the horseshoe with Ward one. Councilperson Carter.
Um, you know, I had the, the, the honor, I guess, into being a part of the first T tournament yesterday and absolutely enjoyed it and getting to meet a number of people around the community that come out to support that. Uh, if you have the opportunity of learning more about this, I suggest that you do. Uh, it wa, it was an amazing time, and it's a great organization. Um, other than that, um, I just, I, I thank everyone for their time today and, and what we've been able to accomplish, thank you.
Thank you, Ward two. Councilperson Cooper is not with us, we'll move on to Ward three.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, this week, just a quick shout out to Major Withrow and Lieutenant Hernandez from the Southwest Division, as well as all the officers who presented awards at this weekend's Police Athletic League Soccer Game. Also like to appreciate the students, parents, coaches, refs, Oklahoma City Parks and Rec staff, and Oklahoma City Public Schools for their commitment to building relationships between our youth and our officers through these programs. Lastly, and most importantly, every year in May, law enforcement agencies, families, and supporters across the United States participate in activities to honor our fallen officers during National Police Week. This year, May ninth through the fifteenth, this week is that week. On a recent trip to Washington DC, as I always do, I visited the National Law Enforcement Memorial where they are under construction to add additional space, because there have been so many names added in the last decade of officers who have fallen in the line of duty. On Friday, our city honored and remembered the officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice to serve and protect our community. If you're not familiar, part of this event is family members and loved ones are invited to lay a flower at the Law Enforcement Memorial here in Oklahoma City, as their loved one's name is called. When family members are not able to, our officers step up and do so in their absence, ensuring not one officer is forgotten. Watching the young son of a fallen officer walk up to that memorial and touch the inscribed name of his father is very powerful. Watching the recipient of an organ donation who lives today and comes every year because of one of our officer sacrifices is powerful. I was reminded of a presentation that I recently watched where Chief Gorley recognized through a partnership with one of our suppliers, officers who are alive today because of our protective equipment, and who thankfully have avoided their family having to endure this. So to our officers, their family and friends, fallen and alive, I support you, I respect you, I see you, and I thank you for the dedication to our community and for the sacrifices you and your families have made for us. May we honor and remember the fallen officers from the City of Oklahoma City and all other agencies in our state and nation this National Police Week. Thank you, Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Young, we'll move to Ward four, Councilperson Stone.
I'm good, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, we will move to Ward five, Councilman Greenwell is not with us, so we will move to Ward six, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, thank you, um, I just want to invite anyone who might be watching or watching later this week, um, to join, Representative Jose Cruz and County Commissioner Brian Mon are partnering with uh, Empower OKC to do a litter blitz in the area around Empower. Um, so that neighborhood is just off of Exchange, um, on, uh, in kind of South Agnew area. Um, there's more information on Empower OKC's website, um, but it'll be from, I believe it's ten, um, to noon or so, um, and just an opportunity to connect with neighbors, and I just appreciate, um, both of them for coordinating this, and I'm excited to participate. Um, and then just, uh, as we heard at the beginning of the council meeting, um, this is Bike Month, and next week is Bike to Work Week. Um, so there's going to be a lot of really great events going on throughout the week. Um, and as you heard Max Harris describe, there's other events happening for the rest of the month. To help people, uh, find different ways to, um, utilize their bike, whether it's for recreation, transportation, um, all that good stuff, so, uh, just thank, uh, thank the mayor for, for putting that resolution forward and, um, just I, I look forward to the opportunities as we saw today with the BRT to really increase that, um, bikeability and walkability in our transit system as a whole, so. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ward seven, that would be me. So I do have a few things I, I do want to, to say, um, a couple. If you all get a chance, please support Oklahoma Contemporary Museum as there is a new exhibit from Ebony Dallas and Mr. Ron Tarver, it's called We Believed in the Sun. And this exhibit, uh, speaks to African-American history, it also speaks to the Deuce area, there is.
Hey Debbie, will you make sure, I texted.
Mr. J, okay, I was like Mr. Jordan, he's taking my thunder, as I was trying to get it through. But, uh, I would encourage you all to please take a look at, at the exhibition, especially in the wake of everything that is happening in, in our, our country, and especially in our state. Um, as we look at the history and even through art, and being able to tell stories of, uh, resiliency. And also, the title of We Believed in the Sun is from a quote of Clara Looper. So again, uh, Mr. Tarver, he is, uh, from Fort Gibson, Oklahoma, and his work is renowned from all across the globe, and he's a renowned photographer. He does reside in, on the East Coast right now currently. And Ms. Ebony Dallas, uh, she is an Oklahoma native, um, and you can see a lot of her work around our city, and you will soon see her work commissioned at our Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center uh, for the natatorium, uh, that will also include a lot of students from our community working with that particular exhibit. So I also want to, um, say, as we are on the subject, uh, with this passing, and we want to continue to say thank you to our, our city council for its passing of the resolution pertaining to the Tulsa Race Massacre. Uh, we look at, we look at how we were able to work together to pass that. And then, um, on the cusp of, of a House Bill seventeen seventy-five being signed into law for our state, basically condemning us having these types of conversations is beyond me. Uh, because again, as we have said, this is, this is our history, whether we like it or not, but we should be able to tell the story and, uh, also have accounts and records from those who have also lived experiences of, of different things that have taken place pertaining to Oklahoma history. Uh, so I, I openly condemn, uh, House Bill seventeen seventy-five, especially as a person, uh, who, who has studied the history of Oklahoma and also of the African-American history of Oklahoma and our indigenous history of Oklahoma, and understanding, um, on the cusp of the stories that have yet to be told and are continuously buried in history, that we speak those names and we continue to speak those stories uh, pertaining to our city in order for us to be better. It's not to, to say we want to stay complacent in, uh, the words or the works of things that have happened, but knowing and understanding these experiences help us to reconcile and do better. So I would encourage us to continue to tell those stories and be the people that we know, setting the the right record of Oklahoma history and telling it. And also in that same cusp of of words, I want to also commend former council member Lee Cooper Jr. for his efforts at the Capitol a couple of weeks ago as well. And openly condemning the words of of a senator. I'm not going to say his name because I'm not going to give him the publicity for it. But I do want to to stand with Pastor Cooper in his words and protecting our African American women and protecting our our women who serve and those who are few in numbers, but do work. Because we are clearly not recognized to serve or encouraged to serve, but we're still here. And I also, as we look at the boards, commissions and trusts, since we've been on this conversation today. I know that that we had a couple of weeks ago, a some appointments that were made and I just want us to, and I know we're we're working on some things in the background, but I wanted to ensure that we continue this conversation, especially dealing with Economic Development Trust. I do, I take issue with the Economic Development Trust. One, for the number, to me, there's not enough folks that can speak to economic development for our city. Five is is not enough. Two, there are no African Americans on this Economic Development Trust, which is a huge issue for me pertaining to economic economic development and the influence that it has collectively for our city. And three, the fact that we as council members are elected for four-year terms, but this Economic Development Trust is six. Six years as far as appointment terms. So I feel we can do better and maybe look at these these term limits. Especially for everyone to be able to serve as far as even our council is concerned, to have a space and really having equity on all of our boards, trusts and commissions. And not just with the general public being able to serve on these boards, trusts and commissions, but also with our city council being able to serve on these boards, trusts and commissions. So just wanted to to keep that at the forefront of our conversations as well. And for our residents that are in the Britton and Midwest Boulevard area, I did speak with our mayor of Jones because that is out in that area as far as some issues that are happening on that that main road. And I want to thank our city manager for helping me to continue to make sure we have accurate information and our Public Works and Utilities Department as well for making sure we're keeping that community in Jones up to date with what's happening and looking forward to being able to return to those streets and riding along safely very soon in the coming days. And the last thing I have is please mark your calendars for, oh, two things, I guess. This Saturday, don't forget, we have one OKC that's happening at Booker T. Washington Park. So please, if you have not experienced one OKC, it is an event you do not want to miss. And we want to see you there. Also with that Innovation District Planning Meeting is happening tonight. The plan for the Innovation District, and we would like for those who are in the vicinity of Innovation District to be able to influence and speak to this plan and what they would like to see. So you can visit our our city website, okc.gov and find more information as far as the Innovation District Plan. I have posted it on my my public Facebook page as far as the Zoom information if you want to join tonight and also on May twentieth. And there's also an event with our SNI on May twenty-fifth pertaining to our residents as far as like wills and trusts and being able to get your property in order. So we we hope you will be able to attend that. And then lastly, May twenty-second, I do want you to mark on your calendars because we will have a Ward seven, a job slash career and city resource fair. And that's going to happen at Douglas High School at the Moses F. Miller Stadium in the atrium area and then that parking lot. So we will have all of our city services to be able to make sure our communities get that information. And because Ward seven is full of entertainment and job opportunities, we will have a lot of those folks that are offering jobs present to be able to get the information to our communities for job opportunities and for our city services. We have quite a few city jobs and some summer jobs for our youth. And we would love to have some lifeguards that are from the community for some of those pools that are also located in the ward as well. So looking forward to seeing everyone this Saturday and also on May twenty-second. Thank you so much. And with that, we'll call for Ward eight. Counselperson Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it. Serving on the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust, I get to see almost on a weekly basis, the great things that our utilities, water and utilities department performs in our everyday lives and for the the long-term benefits that we are going to recoup from things that they're doing today that are going to reach out far, far into the future. And so seeing that this is National Drinking Water Week, I wanted to have Chris Browning come on and tell us a little bit, especially for the new members. We have, in my opinion, some of the highest quality and best tasting water in the United States. And and that's not just my opinion. We have awards that 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 we have received because of the quality of our drinking water. And so I asked Chris Browning to briefly speak to us on a couple of things today. One in particular, the quality of our drinking water. And secondly, what we are doing long-term with the building of a a new water pipeline to Southern Oklahoma for the future of our kids and grandkids. Chris?
Thank you, Councilman Chris Browning, Utilities Director. Appreciate this opportunity to talk about National Drinking Water Week. Oklahoma City joined municipal water utilities across the nation last week from May second to the eighth and celebrating National Drinking Water Week. The Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust actually serves more than 1.4 million people throughout Central Oklahoma, not just Oklahoma City. So we have two water treatment plants, Hefter in the Northwest and Draper in the Southeast. The two facilities combined are capable of producing up to 250 million gallons of safe, clean drinking water daily. The trust also manages more than 4,000 miles of pipe throughout the city. So there's a pretty big responsibility there. I know the fire chief always is thankful that we we keep them in business. So we not only produce drinking water, but we produce fire or we produce water for fire protection throughout the city as well. I think we would all agree that adequate water supply is essential for the safety, health and prosperity of the region. Now, to make sure that we have adequate water supply into the future, we have plans to bring more water from Southeast Oklahoma up to Oklahoma City and Central Oklahoma by building another pipeline. We currently have one that's about 100 miles long. It goes from Matoka to Oklahoma City. It's a 60-inch diameter pipe. We're getting ready to build another pipeline, a 72-inch pipeline to bring all of the permitted water that we currently have from Southeast Oklahoma. That project is underway. We have one segment that is being installed under the Canadian River and we have eight more segments to construct. We're working with U.S. National Wildlife for that permit right now. As soon as we get the permit, we will be begin construction on the rest of the pipeline. So I would like to talk about a program that we have with the Water Utilities Trust. Because of COVID, some of our customers have had a difficult time financially. So I'd like to highlight the Help to Others Program that we've had in place for quite a while. Customers can donate on okcutilities.com or by checking the rounded up box on their utility bill to help a neighbor in need. The Help to Others Program is a bill pay assistance program administered by the Salvation Army. 100% of the contributions are used to assist Oklahoma City utility customers. Over the past three years, over 62,000 donations have totaled nearly $142,000 in assistance that went directly to customers who need bill pay assistance. Customers who need assistance can call the Salvation Army at 405-270-7800 or Oklahoma Heartline at 211 or text 211OK to 898211. And then those customers who rent may also be eligible for assistance. There's some some money available right now through some of the cares funding for rental families who need assistance with year two, their utility bills. And that is administered through the Community Care Partners Funding. So they, to contact those folks, you can visit okcp.org to apply. So Councilman, thanks so much for your support. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk about National Drinking Water Week and our H2O program. And I'd be happy to answer questions that anyone may have at this time.
One thing I want to say is just tell your staff, we really appreciate what they're doing. They do a great job. This Round Up Your Water Bill to the Nearest Dollar to Help a Neighbor is a great program. And I hope, and the reason I'm doing this today is to hopefully publicize that and get it out to the public where people understand that's available. But I think that the most important thing that you mentioned is the fact that with this new 72-inch pipeline to Southern Oklahoma, we will have adequate water for our children and our grandchildren until 2060. And that is a big deal, a big, big deal. And so, Chris, I just, I just thank everyone that works with you and I I truly want to thank you. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask Chris at this time. There being none. Thank you, Chris. A couple of other things real quick. Yesterday, Oklahoma City ranks number one for its public art. Oklahoma City's public art ranging from historic to abstract sculptures to rotating murals in the Plazid District is the best in the country as ranked by readers of USA Today. I'm really proud of that fact. I think that's a great thing. Couple of more things real quick. I want to thank Eric and his staff for final acceptance on North Sarah Road between 150th and 164th. Final acceptance of North Rockwell Avenue from Northwest 122nd to West Memorial Road and final acceptance North Council Road between West Memorial and Northwest 150th Street. The reason I mention those, it takes so long to get these projects finished. And sometimes we forget about them when they're concluded, but hopefully our drivers are enjoying much better roads, at least these three. Finally, I want to thank, just as Bradley did, I want to thank Debbie Martin. That was a great time yesterday. I enjoyed seeing all the people. It proved one thing. My 2021 swing is no better than my 2020. Thank you.
Well, it sounds like you have some work to do. All right. Thank you so much. Do, we will move on to item number 12, City Manager Reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We don't have any presentations on today. We do have the city's investment report on, and so I just just want to acknowledge that that's on there. Appreciate the work of our treasury staff that they do in investing our funds and managing our funds well. If there's any questions you all have on that, we'd be glad to get answers back to you. The only other thing that I would have, and this is something unusual that we don't typically do, but one of our department directors just celebrated his 40th anniversary with the city. So I want to recognize Bob Teener and his service for the city. I really appreciate his leadership. His, his department that he leads has a lot of interaction with the public, and I know you all have a lot of interaction as the council with his department or different issues related to to development services. Bob really is a behind-the-scenes guy that doesn't try to draw a lot of attention to himself, but serving the city for 40 years is so significant. And I just wanted to recognize him and tell him publicly how much I appreciate his leadership for the city and his service. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I think we all join you in that sentiment and thanking him for his service and dedication to our city. With that, we'll move on. We do have citizens to be heard, item number 13, and I do believe we have two citizens signed up to speak. Correct. I have Derek Scarsella. I apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly. And please limit your time to three minutes and if you'll give your name and address.
Thank you so much. My name is Derek Scarsella. I'm a constituent of Ward four. My address is 313 Springfield Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73149. And I'm here today to voice my concerns regarding the proposed fiscal year 22 budget for the Oklahoma City Police Department. And after review, I have several concerns. I'm sure that you're aware that the Oklahoma City Police Department is the second most lethal police force in the country. Why is this? The citizens of Oklahoma City are not inherently more criminal or dangerous than other cities. It's because we lack appropriate funded schools, mental health care resources and drug rehab programs. When we defund those programs, we are creating very criminality used to validate these increasingly inflated police budgets. It makes more sense to me to use that money upfront by investing in our people instead of on the back end to overpolice them. This would truly honor the sanctity of life. I believe that people put their money where their values are, and so I wanted to take a closer look at the values of Oklahoma City. So I looked at the money. And what I found was that a new police recruit with minimal training starts at a base pay of about $47,000 a year. On the other hand, to earn the same amount, an Oklahoma City public school teacher must have 14 years of experience on top of their four-year bachelor's degree. Those are Oklahoma City's values. What might happen for our city if we refocus those values on providing our children with robust and equitable education instead of setting them up to supply the school-to-prison pipeline? There's a culture crisis in our police department and it's created massive distrust and unrest in our city. Unfortunately, the budget proposal I saw from the police department failed to meet many of those requirements that we are looking for. Their plan to gain back the trust that they've lost with the community is essentially a PR initiative without any sort of substantial actions. They don't want to do better. They just want to look like they're doing better. And that shows a lack of respect for the suffering of our citizens. Council members, let me remind you that right now, six OKCPD officers sit charged with the unlawful murder of our citizens. This is not a coincidence. It's a pattern of abuse. Your constituents are demanding accountability from the police department. Our families are being ripped apart every day by overpolicing. Couple this with our deeply underfunded public education system, our kids don't stand a chance. These are just the symptoms of a deeper problem that must be addressed. I didn't see anything in the police budget that was substantial enough that met those concerns of our citizens. I humbly request you to not approve this budget without significant changes. This budget is an opportunity to show the citizens of Oklahoma City where our values are. It's time to make it right, Oklahoma City. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. Up next, I have Joy Reardon.
Hello.
Hello. If you'll state your address in three minutes, please.
Joy Reardon, 125 North, Northwest 20, now Northwest Knights, sorry. I have three issues. One is the one I keep bringing up. And that is the the scooter problem. We keep, we got a new scooter in town. I don't know if you all are aware of it. The other one is y'all keep talking about the walkability of Oklahoma City. Is everybody still there? Hello?
We're here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Y'all keep talking about the walkability. What about the ADA ability? It seems like it's it's being put on the back burner of a lot of things with this new BRT thing. Not once did I hear anything about the ADA aspect of it. And a lot of the, I go all over downtown and stuff and I still And a lot of the, I go all over downtown and stuff, and I still see where they put in new concrete with no ramps. What is the deal with that? Maybe, uh, city manager can comment on that. Hello?
Joy, I'll, uh, this is Joe Bath, I'll chime in. I actually did notice that the other day as well, that I saw, um, newly poured concrete that didn't have any ADA ramps. And I took a picture and noted it because I wanted to send it to staff and sort of understand what was happening. So just let you know that, uh, at least for the instance I saw, I, there might be others. So I think from my perspective as your representative, if you can ever like take a picture or at least give me the locations, we can look into those. Cause yeah, I was rather surprised at not seeing, um, a ramp accessibility on this newly poured sidewalk.
Seven oh five, uh, Northwest Fifth is a prime example.
What was that again, Joy? I'm sorry.
Seven oh five or seven oh one, the Bob Moore, uh, Training Center, right down from, uh, Station One. Brand new concrete, no ramps.
I will take a look at that and we'll get, and we'll let you know.
What are we going to do about the scooter issue? It's becoming out of control. And the city's not getting compensated for it. And it's just city's not getting compensated for it. And two, uh, Lime and this new whatever it is, is not taking responsibility to keep, keep up with the fact that people keep putting their scooters in illegally parked spots.
So we have a permitting process that, that allows for the scooters to, to be here. And in that's, in that permitting process, there are certain requirements. If we get notices of issues with the scooters being, you know, because when the scooters are dropped off, the, the vendor isn't there at the time. If we get notices of that, then staff is, uh, will contact the scooter companies and notify them so they can help to address that. But it definitely is a challenge for us.
Well, the whole deal is, uh, this past Sunday, I talked to Lime, I talked to one of their juicers or whatever he's called. And I also reported to the fire department and also to the action center that at, uh, on, uh, Walker, they parked it within a hundred feet of, uh, hundred feet of a hydrant.
Joy, your three minutes.
Sorry.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. City Manager, if you can, can you please follow up with her to make sure we address all of our concerns?
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. All right, we still have some business to take care of. Uh, we have an executive session, so if you don't mind, we'll get out of here and we'll, please sign into your executive session and we'll be back to adjourn the meeting. please sign into your executive session and we'll be back to adjourn the meeting. please sign into your executive session and we'll be back to adjourn the meeting. All right, we have three, four coming in. Waiting for at least two more. Have one more. Oh, that's majority. Five is. All right, with that, we move to item fourteen and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.